Good evening, everyone. This is March 8, 2018 Town and Monroe Planning Board Workshop Meeting. Welcome. Could we take a roll call to see if we have a quorum?
Anthony?
Here.
Bonnie?
Here.
James?
Here.
Jason?
Here.
Jeffrey?
Here.
Lisa?
Here.
And Rich is absent. We have a quorum.
Terrific. With that, we will do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to point out the fire exits. There are two in to the front of me. One is the main entrance and exit out. There's a second one over by the kitchen. And then there's a third over here behind us to exit the building. First item on the agenda is an application for an accessory apartment. Aaron Freed is the applicant. If you could come up and discuss your application.
Good evening.
Good evening. Welcome.
Good luck.
Right there. Right there. You can speak into the microphone.
Sure.
So I'm supposed to go? So I'm actually, you could begin. I'm just trying to locate your property while you provide a presentation. I know you're near Pine Tree, right?
Yeah, we have a few properties up the corner.
All right. I'm just trying to get my sense here where we are. I think I have to zoom out. Oh, there's Chester. Too far that way.
My wife and I live at 303 Herman Heights Road.
Excuse me, sir. Would you pull the mic in and talk?
Oh, sure. I saw everybody else.
They're getting ready.
How's that? My wife and I live at 303 Herman Heights Road, and we're looking to put an accessory in order for my mother-in-law into our basement. That's great.
This one right here?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That's the property. It's near the turnoff to go. This is Pine Tree, I believe, here, right?
Yeah.
And interestingly, for whatever reason, these maps are so old that your house isn't even showing up, I don't think. Oh, there it is. Okay.
That's probably old pictures.
So it's right here?
Yeah, that picture's got to be about six years old or so.
Okay. And is this on your property?
That's my neighbor's house.
That's your neighbors?
Yes.
Okay. Can't make out the lot. There aren't two houses on the lot. It's just I'm not seeing the lot lines?
No, correct.
Let me just switch back here real quick.
Go to the right.
Ah, gotcha. Okay. Thank you. Well, so in terms of procedure, the Planning Board reviews and approves accessory apartments. And the purpose of this meeting, this is a workshop, so that we have the opportunity to ask you about what you're proposing and then to run through the regulations and see whether or not we have the information that we need to be able to consider the application as well as to find out whether your application complies with the regulations. So one of the questions, so I was reviewing your application package. I don't know if people have had an opportunity to take a look or may, may not have. The house right now, how many bedrooms do you have?
Three bedrooms.
Three bedrooms. And so you're adding a fourth bedroom?
Correct.
Okay.
We're looking to finish the basement with a four-bedroom kitchen living room.
Okay. And got to pull up your application. One of the things I was looking for is what is the total gross square foot area of your dwelling now? And then what is the size, which I think you did provide us, of the proposed apartment?
So the basement floor space, as it sits right now unfinished, is just under 1,282 square feet.
Okay.
The way that we had laid out the floor plan was, I believe, made it including closet space. There's some other stairs closet space. I'm brutal that I wasn't sure it needed to be included. About 890 square foot.
Okay.
Bedroom, bathroom, kitchen space.
And this is the layout?
That's the best I could do, yes.
Okay. So everybody has that?
So in the, where your right hand is actually more of a, in the top, the opposite corner.
Over here?
Yep.
Okay.
Is a unfinished utility closet with a socket for the oil tank.
So the layout, the note says 870 total square foot finished space.
I believe that's correct.
But that isn't, that's not necessarily all dedicated to the apartment itself? Or is it?
It is.
It is?
Yeah.
So I'm going to kind of read through the accessory apartment regulations. I don't know if you are aware of them or if anyone gave you a copy.
I am, I did the best I could with them and threw them.
Okay.
I'm a business factor by trade, not a...
Okay. So we'll go through this. And it's really to make sure that we have the information and to find out whether you comply or not. So first, it's allowed accessory to a single-family detached dwelling. So you have a detached dwelling.
Yes.
And a single family. It's not a two-family, anything else. You have to comply otherwise with all the bulk requirements that are in the district regulations. You have a C of O. You're, you know, I'm sure that you do comply because you were able to get a building permit and construct the dwelling. So my understanding is you do comply. The one area where I have questions is the dwelling size. It says the minimum habitable floor area for an accessory apartment is 450 square feet, which you would meet. It says, "But in no case shall such accessory apartment exceed 30% of the gross floor area of the single-family detached dwelling in which it's located or 750 square feet of gross floor area, whichever is less." So you're showing 870. The max is 750 square feet of gross floor area. But it's whatever is less of 30% of the total gross floor area of the dwelling. So I was trying to see, and I don't know if any of the members saw, whether there was a gross floor area on one of the, any of the C of Os or anything that we looked at?
2698 is what's on the application.
2698? Oh, thank you. So 30% is about?
Seven, huh?
I think Mark's calculating.
Eight oh nine?
Eight oh nine. So that would, so based on the regulations, you're allowed up to 750 square feet
Okay.
of habitable floor area. Your application says 1,282 square feet, but the finished spaces, finished space is 890 square feet. So that may be larger than allowed. And the way that the regulations are written, we're, I don't believe we're allowed to waive that particular requirement. So if you really wanted to pursue that size, you would have to go, and if I'm wrong, Mike, let me know, they would have to get a variance?
If you can't waive it, it would require a variance.
Okay. And the problem is that the way the regulations were written is that if you exceed the requirements, the variance, it's considered a two-family dwelling. So it wouldn't even be an area variance. It would be a use variance. And that's a higher standard to meet. But I'm going to ask the engineer to take a look. So we're going to put him on the next agenda to look at, because we talk about minimum habitable floor area. So there may be space that's included that isn't considered minimum habitable floor area. So you might meet the requirement. So I want him to check that.
The good news is we've got a very, very detailed dimension plan, which is a great start.
Right.
We usually don't have this good information, so thank you.
I always thought I was going to get scolded for...
No.
No, no.
Thank you for giving complete information.
Can I ask, Aaron?
What was in this?
Everything. There's a copy of the sketch.
Need a hand there?
Yeah, I can't get to that.
I had an equally hard time getting it.
I can barely get the lid off.
That's the property, the property map when I went to the engineer.
Maybe that would be good for Mark to have.
Septic.
Okay.
He had everything together. And that's, I wasn't sure what it was.
Okay.
There's elevation maps in the book.
Okay.
Which I didn't know if they applied or not.
Okay. That's something we may have our engineer review. Because I know that there is a letter that talks about a four-bedroom dwelling could be constructed based on the septic system that exists there today. If you have three and you're going to a four-bedroom, that would seem to be, you know, acceptable. One of the requirements is that the town engineer has to review it and find that, that in fact is reasonable and that your land can support that additional bedroom.
Okay.
So you have that information. Existing single-family dwellings, the other requirement is that the dwelling has to have been lawfully constructed and used as a single-family dwelling for at least 10 years. And I understand yours...
The building's not that old. I did actually, I put a note next to it that we've been there. I wrote since purchase on there because I, we haven't been there for 10 years.
Right.
Nobody hasn't been there for 10 years.
Right. I think it's, the way that it's written is it's that you don't have to have occupied it for 10 years, but the building has to have existed for 10 years.
Okay.
And I don't believe it has, based on the information that we received.
Correct. It's, I believe, about eight years old.
Right. So the good news is this is an area that the Planning Board can waive. The regulations say the Planning Board may waive the 10-year requirement upon an evidentiary showing by the applicant establishing that the accessory apartment will enable the owner occupying the principal dwelling to provide care for an elderly or disabled relative residing in the accessory apartment. So to that, for the record, who's going to inhabit the accessory apartment?
My owner with mother-in-law.
Okay. So that would seem to be reasonable. So we would address that as part of the decision-making process as a waiver. The requirements do state that you have to be the owner occupant of the dwelling, which you are. You're not a tenant or a renter. There should be no more than one accessory apartment, which is the case.
Correct.
It's only one. It shall apply with New York State Uniform Fire Prevention and Building Code, which will be determined by the building inspector.
Yes, ma'am.
Off-street parking, do you plan on adding any off-street parking? Or do you need? Okay, so you're just...
I know our driveway's quite spacious.
Okay. And so at this point, you have enough for two parking spaces already?
On the existing driveway?
Yeah.
I mean, I could probably park about eight or 10 cars on there.
Okay. Okay. So that's, do you have a garage or...
We do. We have a very large, two-car garage.
Okay. And that's not being converted as far as space? Okay, so at a minimum, you have the two?
Correct.
And then space for your...
I wasn't sure if that included the garage space or not.
Okay. Yeah, no, it does. So if you have two-car garage, although we all fill our things, some of us fill things with...
Yeah, we have lots of stuff.
But as long as you have the ability to park the two spaces and whatever you need for your in-law who will be living there, that's fine.
Yes, we do.
So no other use will be permitted accessory to the apartment, so you can't do a home occupation within the apartment. Each dwelling unit should, shall have a separate bathroom and kitchen entirely within the dwelling unit. So you're providing that?
Yes.
And no, are you proposing any kind of exterior changes? You're not changing the foundation, anything of that nature?
Not anymore, not currently.
Okay. So is there going to be an exterior exit just for the, for the separate unit? Or they're going to kind of enter?
No, there's, well, full disclosure. I approached an employee of the town in the, I don't remember if she worked for the, I'm not sure actually what department it was that she worked with. I, middle of last year, I went in and actually started, tried to start the building process, or the application process. The, to the right of where the driveway is, I was told that I could add a entrance to the basement, an exterior entrance that would be required, that that wouldn't fall under the building permit.
Okay.
Which we did.
Okay.
I don't know 110% that that should have been done beforehand or not, which kind of came to light afterwards.
Okay.
But there is a separate entrance to the basement as well as a entrance to the upstairs through the inside of the house.
Okay. So the regulations do say that you are allowed to install an entrance to serve the accessory apartment. So...
Which was done, yes.
So, so it's been done, and that's the only change otherwise that's being made?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Lot coverage, because you're not adding on, you're not changing the lot coverage that exists there at present. Again, our, our town engineer is going to look at whether the sewer service to your dwelling is adequate. There are various conditions that I won't go through that are in the regulations as to what happens if the Planning Board does approve the application, which you would be subject to in, in terms of continuing occupancy of the application, I'm sorry, of the, of the dwelling, so that you can have the accessory apartment. One thing that I wanted to mention as far as the application, I think it's an owner consent affidavit or there's something that's signed. And technically, or I believe based on the records, that is the dwelling owned in both your names?
My wife's as well, yes.
Okay. So I think that she needs to sign the application as well. Just so you're aware.
On that point, on the application form that you filled out quite well, there are nine numbered items that need to be included in affidavit form for each of you to swear to. Two of them are somewhat changed because one of them is you'd have to swear that the home has been in existence for 10 years. You will say it has not because it's only eight. And another one was no physical changes have been made, and you would add, other than the addition or the installation of the separate entrance.
Okay.
But some of these vermin's go into the future in which you represent that you understand the nature of the regulations and how you can't make changes without approval. And that needs to be in affidavit form. So if you, if you look back at your application form, you'll see what I mean.
I just want to touch upon, so procedurally, there is no public hearing of any sort for this. From a SEACRA perspective, so all our actions, we have to review from the perspective of the State Environmental Quality Review Act. That's a law that the Planning Board has, a state law that the Planning Board has to follow. And the first step in that process is we have to type the action. And by law, there are three types, a Type 1, Type 2, and Unlisted Action. And I don't want to get into the details of that, but there is something called a Type 2 action, which means you're exempt, you don't have to comply or you're not subject to the SEACRA regulations. And so I earlier, this afternoon, was asking Mike whether or not an accessory apartment would fall within those Type 2 exceptions. So then we don't have to worry about resolving or doing a negative declaration or making a determination. So Mike, I'd just like you to speak to that.
Yeah, there, one of the Type 2 exceptions that would exempt this from SEACRA review reads as follows. Construction or expansion of a single-family, two-family or three-family residence on an approved lot, including provision for necessary utility connections, maintenance upgrade of drinking water well and septic. It seems to me, but it's your decision, and I think you must realize that however you decide this will be a precedent that you'll have to follow in the future, that if construction of the home in the first instance was Type 2, exempt from SEACRA, and the town considers this to be a single-family home, because as Bonnie mentioned, if it exceeds that square-footage area, it becomes a two-family home, then the spirit of the section, it seems to me, because it allows both construction and expansion of a single-family home, is that this is also a Type 2 action. Certainly, the mere addition of an authorized bedroom, which could be done by building permit, as long as it's within the, you know, the septic system, would be a Type 2 action. Why should it be different if it's an accessory apartment that's still part of a single-family home? However, the language is not an exact fit. It's really more the spirit of what the section says. So if you feel it's important in this and, since this is your first and all of your other accessory apartment laws, to make sure that an environmental assessment form is submitted and that you make an assessment of the potential environmental impacts and, in most cases, in all likelihood, issue a negative declaration, which is a determination that there are no significant adverse environmental impacts. And in the unusual case, require preparation of environmental impact statement, then that should be the procedure you follow. But if you think that the spirit of that section and the near fit of its language would make this a Type 2 or exempt action under SEACRA, you can declare this to be a Type 2. I just advise you that if you do it on this one, you're pretty much going to have to do it on all the others that come before you.
Can, can we consider it in a way, Mike, that, almost like specific to this application, that they're adding one bedroom, that they're staying within the footprint? Only because we may get some other submission, which honestly, the way that the regulations are written would probably require variance. So, but, you know, at least to say, you know, you're not changing the footprint of the building. It's only one bedroom. The septic is, can accommodate the four bedrooms if that's in fact what we find.
All of those are definitional requirements of the code for accessory apartment.
Right. And so because of all those factors and the specifics of your application, from my perspective, I think it would be, I think it would be reasonable in the spirit of the Environmental Quality Review Act and the Type 2 action to consider it exempt action. That's my thinking, but I would love to hear from the board members whether they think differently. As well as, you know, as we're just, this is a workshop. If you have any questions of the applicant, you know, let's talk about them so that if there's anything additional that he needs to submit as part of his application, he can. So. Any thoughts?
I just want to make sure I understood your explanation, Mike, that the original building of the home was already a Type 2 action?
Correct.
Itself. So...
And the exemption applies to both construction and expansion of a single-family home. And in a way, this isn't even an expansion, at least not in the sense that the footprint or the external appearance changes, but merely the conversion of unused space to additional living space. To that extent, it's an expansion of a single-family home.
I would even add also that there's another Type 2, although again, it doesn't fit. There's another Type 2 action which allows the construction of an accessory structure to a single-family dwelling. So if it's a garage, a deck, anything of that nature, would also be exempt. So the law even expects that you could even put in actual other structures, and it would be exempt. And here, that's not even happening. So...
And further, in the case of single-family homes, individual setback variances, the general spirit or the approach of the regulations is single-family homes in and of themselves, and almost every aspect of their approval, be it variance, building permit, construction of a garage, connection to utilities, are things that do not require environmental review and therefore they are Type 2 actions. However, we could certainly explicitly say in your resolution that because this involves no change in the footprint and it is an internal expansion only, involves only one bedroom, a living space for a single person, that for all of those reasons, it fits with the spirit or the letter of that exemption. And that way, we have wiggle room if...
Yeah.
If some one comes in later, that's in some fashion much, much different in character.
I like, I like that approach.
I like it.
Because it doesn't, you know, wet us to every single application going forward that we're going to treat as a Type 2. So any other thoughts?
Language, if you would like, I'll put that in the resolution.
I think as long as we're not changing the building itself, you're still staying in the footprint, it, you should be, we should pursue this language.
Well, and based on my reading of the new accessory apartment code, it doesn't, it has to be, it has to be built within the existing footprint.
Exactly.
It doesn't allow an expansion.
Right.
So, right, like you said, immediately becomes a variance issue. It's sort of now outside the purview of that.
So it's hard to imagine an application that may not fit this.
Right.
But, but by staying what we tie it to, we leave room for the possibility that there is...
Who knows, just reserving it.
The only exception I'm thinking of, and I don't even think this would have a bearing. I don't even know if this is realistic. If there are other supports, like if an application came to the board, a planning board to expand the parking area, and that requires cutting of a slope and erosion control and containment, I don't know if that would exceed it. But I agree with the language that you're proposing, and I think that's very safe.
And that, that's a great example because if for some reason the accessory apartment, they wanted, oh, so as an example, let's say there were two garage spaces there, and what they wanted to convert was the garage. So then, let's say the applicant wanted to put in a parking pad for three cars. And now we're getting into, you know, potentially grading, whatever, you know, maybe on the unique, based on the uniqueness of some other application.
Or lighting.
Right. We wouldn't, we wouldn't want to.
Or if the sanitary system needs to be expanded, and that creates another problem.
Right. And so, and suddenly, it's a brand-new system, so that's on top of everything else. So I think, again, treating the resolution specific to this seems reasonable. Any, any other thoughts?
Just for future references, I think we should treat each resolution on a case-by-case basis and not limit ourselves to one and have to live by that rule for the rest of the Planning Board's eternity.
Right. Which is what Mike is suggesting.
Mr. Freed, it's my assumption that based on the way you explained it, the entrance to the basement and what could eventually be the accessory apartment didn't require anything other than opening a space for the door. You didn't do any material changes outside except to that?
Correct.
One exterior change? Okay.
These plans mention that there will be an addition of a deck?
Hold on, I'd like to phone in, please.
The plans do mention that there'll be an addition of a new deck?
There's an existing deck that I'd like to enclose. So if my mother-in-law has her space, that I can have a little bit extra space for myself. I did include it if it only, I tried to make it separate so that if it did impact the apartment itself, that I could throw it to the wind if it was necessary.
So I just heard Mike mention that, if there's an addition.
So...
But it's more enclosing an existing deck as opposed to adding living space was the explanation that I was given when I, when I'd asked in the building department.
So is it separate?
There's an exterior door of the kitchen.
Right.
Currently.
Right.
And I'd just like to be able to sit out there when it gets a little bit colder, you know, but just to enclose the existing deck that's there.
To heat it and to?
Not even to heat it.
Just to enclose it?
Yes, ma'am.
You know, I...
The plans mention that another deck, like for outdoor use, would be added to that after this one's enclosed.
Only if it was acceptable. Correct.
Because I heard Mike mention something.
Right.
So that's the only reason I'm bringing it up.
So I guess the question is, are, is the, I think you're, what you're doing is you're providing full disclosure of various improvements that you want to make to the single-family dwelling. dwelling.
Correct. Yeah, I was told to include them all in the same application by the building department.
Okay. What we're actually allowed to approve is the accessory apartment. So I think I would ask Mike whether approval of an exterior deck and this, and I understand the concern about, again, we were talking about additional space and, and construction and disturbances, but the deck itself and the interior area that you want to create from the existing deck, I don't know that's within our purview.
I mean, my gut is it's a separate issue. However, I didn't bring the code language, but in the affidavit section of the application form, one of the things has to be no physical changes have been made to the dwelling and that no changes will be made to the premises other than shown on the plans, which limits it to the installation of an entrance to serve the accessory apartment. So in one case, they talk about dwelling and the other, the premises. You know, if you have doubt about what, and I don't know what the precise language is of the code section, because those might have been paraphrases that I put into the application form.
Is this the new application form or the old application form?
It's, it's, well, it's six months old. It was devised to dovetail with this law.
Oh, okay, so this is the one that takes into consideration? Okay.
I don't believe I included the enclosure of the deck on my accessory application. I believe it's just mentioned on the building permit itself, which I don't know that I needed to include the building permit with the accessory application. Is that correct?
We did.
I included it just because I, I wanted to have everything included when I brought it here, that would then be going back to the building department. But it's not mentioned on the accessory apartment because I was, the way it's explained to me is that it was a separate, that it wasn't part of the accessory.
Well, if it's not part of it, it wouldn't be part of your approval. If Ben feels comfortable with issuing a building permit for that within his jurisdiction, he can do so, or if he's uncomfortable, he can send it to the zoning board and ask them to interpret what the law means.
Right.
But it's not part of this application.
Right.
Is what I'm hearing from Mr. Freed.
Yes.
So I think it's just, you know, whether or not you were requesting an accessory apartment, could he come in and close his deck? And could he come in and construct a deck? And the deck space that you're creating isn't specifically for your mother.
Not.
It's for you. It's for the dwelling itself.
For my wife. Yes.
So it's not that the space of the, her, the accessory apartment living space, that there's a door that's going to lead to a new deck or two?
Correct.
Okay. So, again, I don't know to the extent to which you want to discuss it. I don't know if these are separate and apart from the accessory apartment. You can give it some thought. We're going to have Mr. Freed come back to our regular meeting. But again, this is the purpose of the workshop, to ask the questions so you can think about them and, and you know.
We can include a condition that says that no approval is, if you approve this, is granted of the deck enclosure, the construction of new deck space, which are issues that remain within the purview of the building inspector.
Right. I mean, that would be reasonable to me. And, and we, well, and because we can't. It's not, again, with our, within our purview, that we're specifically allowed to approve an accessory apartment that complies with what these regulations state. And anything else is, I think, a matter for the building inspector.
Right, I think what's happened is he's.
In this instance.
Exactly at full disclosure, he's contemplating.
Yes.
Other improvements to the residence and he's just being fully honest and transparent in providing that information. Question for you, the 2698 doesn't include the enclosed area that you're creating from the existing deck?
Correct.
So that throws another curveball at you that when we do the 30% calculation, in fact, the overall finished product has that area that's now enclosed, if it happened to be heated and part of now the main structure, that 30% is going to be of a larger number.
A larger number, right.
But the 750 is the one that's causing him trouble anyway, right?
Yeah.
Well, potentially, I think what I'd like is for Mark to look at, because it talks about minimum habitable area. And so, you know, you have to have 450, but you can't exceed 750 square feet. We have to look at the language.
Yeah.
I don't know that it's gross. Is it habitable area? That is different than, you know, because you have a utility room for the entire house, you have other space there that might be included, which shouldn't be.
For this particular application, the 750 seems to rule, but we may run into a situation where the 30% is impacted by whatever.
And that's where it is, then it is important to know what that addition is.
I'll check with Ben because I want to make sure that whatever advice I provided to the board is consistent with how Ben handles applications throughout the town.
Okay.
With regard to the 750, how do we get around that, or if we're going to, if the 30, well, 30% was 809, but the proposed accessory is 890 square feet. So would.
If, if part of the 890 is not habitable, technically habitable space.
Oh, it isn't, okay.
So if.
If, that's, Mark needs to check that, because we have that question.
Utility rooms may be subtracted, the staircase may be subtracted. So again, whatever.
I included the raw.
You did gross floor area.
Would be in everything, I wasn't sure if that would get subtracted.
But what I complimented you on was having a lot of dimensions, so I can work with Ben, look at the way that he has interpreted the town code, or how he has applied the town code as well for habitable area, and, and we'll make sure that we're consistent.
Right. So that's to be determined before the next meeting.
Mr. Freed, I just, I want to understand a little bit more.
Sure.
You did provide such a great plan. I want to kind of understand how this fits into your overall household a little better.
Sure.
Just from what I'm looking at and what we saw, I'm assuming that where this living room is, is underneath where your garage is and the driveway would be here.
The. This is where the, this is where the existing garage is.
So you drive into the garage.
Correct. And this essentially mimics my exact floor plan of the first floor of the house, living room, kitchen, bathroom. Master bedroom is where the, another living room.
Where do, where does your family enter the house now? Where's your main entrance?
We use the garage, but there's a front door here.
There's an entrance from the garage into the house here, but there's a front door here.
Correct, there's a covered front porch and it comes through the front door.
The stairs lead down into the, what will be the accessory apartment if it's approved.
Correct.
This landing is at ground, is at the bottom of the stairs?
Yeah, correct.
So you've come up the stairs this way?
To come into the first floor, correct.
And the door was added here, just in front of?
No, the door was added here to the outside.
Oh, so this takes you, so when you come up the stairs here, I guess when you come up the stairs here, where does that take you? Into, into the household?
Into the kitchen.
Oh, okay.
And then this door, there is a door here that goes into the garage. This is the, this is the garage. This is strictly the basement.
Oh, okay, 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 okay.
There's no access to the garage from the basement area.
Mr. Freed, is the basement below grade?
Yes.
I always mention this to be helpful, because I think what you're doing is perfectly fine. But you may want to consider, I don't know if the basement has any flooding issues, so you may want to make sure before you invest any finishing in your basement. And then the other thing is the invert of your sewer, if you're going to put in a bathroom, you may need to have a pump to get to the invert.
I believe I may have noted under the sump pit in the, in the corner. And when I had spoken with the plumber, they said that we should probably add two just for, just to be on the safe side.
Okay.
With the information you submitted, are the original floor plans for the house included?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So that Mark can look at just the overall layout, and I don't know if maybe we could get a copy since there's questions and about just kind of the general entrances and location relative to the house. Maybe we could, yeah, we could take a look at that. I was actually just checking here to see if maybe there was owner sales, property, inventory. It's like, at this distance, it's hard to read. Do you see something that says information, tax layout, building?
Like the tax map?
Not the tax map, actually like, sort of in dimensions. I don't know if it's going to be what's already been submitted.
Yeah, I think it is a tag.
Yeah, that's, so maybe all, I was going to see if there was any additional information here, but there may not be. Okay.
I don't know, is this, is this what is it?
Is this improvement? Yeah, I was wondering if there was anything in addition to that, but maybe that's all there is in this, too.
No, correct, this is all, this is what I got from the.
The building?
The accessories.
Okay, so that's probably what's from there. Okay. All right. Any other questions from the board members?
Not at this time.
No?
No.
Mike or Mark, any questions?
No, not at this time.
So you're available to attend our meeting next week?
It's the 20th.
Oh, sorry, the way they fell, the 20th?
March 20th.
March 20th.
7:00 PM. I'll be in touch before then.
Okay.
One question, do they have to do, because on their application, it doesn't list that they needed to fill in an EAF form? Do they do need to fill that in?
No, I actually, I thought that they, did they provide one?
I didn't think we had.
But at this point, it doesn't matter because it's a Type II, so.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
That they don't need to submit one.
But I need his wife's signature on the original application.
Correct.
You can just stop by the office and.
Okay.
Because I don't bring the.
Do we want him to come in for that or she?
No, she can just come in. I didn't bring the original with me tonight.
Right. Just so it's binding on both of you, since you both own the, the property.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Any questions of us?
Thank you.
No.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you. The next applicant is Vincent Finney, who's proposing an application within the ridgeline protection overlay district. Come on up.
749.
Good evening.
Vincent Finney, 29 Webb Farm Road, Monroe.
Why don't you give an overview to the board of what you're proposing to do, and in the meantime, I'm going to find your property?
Detached garage.
And where do you reside?
Webb Farm Road, 29.
Off of East Monbassia.
Yeah.
Off of East Monbassia, yes.
I think you're right here.
Yep, that's right there. Yep, right there.
It's the weird-looking one.
That alone, I wonder about why those parcels are that shape.
There you go.
Was it intended to be subdivided more or was there going to be a through road?
There was, I think, connecting to Woodcock, but it never happened.
Yeah, odd. I mean, does that, I guess that potential exists. I don't know who owns, does someone own this?
No, I own half and my neighbor owns half of that.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay. See if this one.
We actually own half, the coal cycle also.
Okay. Let's see if I can get, there we go. So this is your structure. So could you let us know relative to what we see here about where you're proposing this garage? And also specifically, is it anticipated that you'd be cutting any trees to accommodate it?
No trees cut. It'd be right here.
So it's going to come off of your.
Existing driveway.
Existing driveway.
Yes.
Okay. Did anybody have a chance to go out, take a look at the property at all, or not yet?
This looks like when I was, when I was building a home.
Yeah, it looks like.
There's a lot of construction stuff, too.
Yeah, yeah.
I just built it four years ago.
Let me see if there's another. Is that better?
That's better.
Okay. Yeah, because I think you can see what was cleared and graded out.
Yeah.
Okay. So again, you're going to put it right in about here?
Yes.
Okay. So the reason you're here is that the building inspector determined that you are located within an area called the Ridge Line Protection Overlay District. And the intent is that if there are any structures that are proposed, that the planning board get the opportunity to review the application and determine whether or not the building would be visible from a variety of vantage points. And we have to look at it on a case-by-case basis, because depending on where you propose the structure, you know, the ridge line encompasses, the overlay encompasses the actual ridge line plus an area on either side, just so that there's a review of the area that's adjacent to the ridge line. I did go out to the site and I can tell you, and if you're available for the next meeting, we'd like to have the applicant at the next meeting. Again, this is a workshop. But it actually is higher on the other side of the road, where those other dwellings are.
Yes.
You're actually kind of on the downslope.
Yes.
So, and in fact, the garage itself is going down the slope. When I drove on East Monbassia, the property next to you is vacant. It goes down to like a wetland corridor and it's, it's not really visible from many areas. And that's really what we're checking.
Yeah, this whole area right here is all wetlands.
Right.
And I think there's a easement going through with the water department, village.
Okay.
Goes across my property line that they cut every year.
Okay.
So I don't think any dwellings can be built anywhere near my home.
Right. I'm trying to see if I can get a topographic map here. I don't know if I could see it. Maybe have it here. Because I don't think the base map has topography on it. Oh, yeah, it does. There you go. So you can kind of see the topography here. So see how these are kind of, these are the, I think, the high points. This is the ridge right in here. So these houses that have already been constructed before the law was passed are on the ridge. And then it slopes down this way and it slopes down this way. And you're proposing your, again, this is showing as if this were undeveloped, but it's developed, and you're proposing your garage somewhere in here. So there's a variety of information that you would be required to provide as part of this decision-making process, including the materials, a rendering of the garage and various other submissions. But what I would like is for the board to actually go out to the property and take a look at it, because if in fact, the garage isn't visible from a variety of vantage points, either of the scenic roads that have been designated in the comprehensive plan or from any trail, then I, I would recommend that the planning board consider waiving some of these, these requirements, because in fact, it won't be visible. So I think it really, you know, we want to have a sense of what the applicant's proposing. I think you need to go to the site and then we can kind of figure out what should be submitted, if anything, in addition. That, that's my thinking, but I would like to hear from everybody else.
Do we know where the property is along East Monbassia in, relative to where the Appalachian Trail crosses?
No, I do not know that.
I can bring up.
I think that's further down towards Tuxedo, that's the property of Monroe and Tuxedo.
I think it might be further down than where that is by a ways, but I wanted to.
Yeah, by a ways.
So why don't you guys continue to discuss any questions you have, and I'm going to try and bring up something here.
Is this an additional garage, or do you, do you have a garage attached to the house already?
Yes, I do.
Oh, okay, yeah. And how many cars are you putting in the, in the new garage?
The garage, there'd be two.
Okay.
And my quads and toys. And I also have a shop, woodwork and shops, so.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Are, are you proposing to put any construction vehicles or do you?
No.
Own your own business, a contractor's vehicles, anything like that?
I do own my own business, but no. Only thing that would be there is my backhoe, which I do use on my property to plow, which is, it's a small tractor, it's not even a backhoe. And I'm tired of my snow going on my truck, so.
I was thinking that, with the snow out there, it's just terrible.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to try and get to a map here.
Will there be a second story on the garage above?
Yeah, just like a loft.
Just a loft?
Yes.
What's the overall height of the structure?
I think just over 24 feet. Yeah, just, just over 25, about 25, I said.
Sorry, I'm trying to, you just get to the scenic and historic section? Any other questions with the applicant? What's, what is the, or is it going to be vinyl sided? What, what are, what's the actual design?
It'll be brick, like my house, to match my house.
Okay.
Front will be brick and maybe the two sides, either stucco or siding.
Okay.
Will you be extending the driveway to reach the?
No.
You're building it right on the edge of the.
Right, where the driveway is, yeah.
Okay.
Not changing anything.
So here is a map, let me blow it up. So the Appalachian Trail and the Long Trails go through the town. The Long Trail is up here to the north, but the Appalachian Trail is down here. Here's East Monbassia. And I'm trying to make out where Webb, this is Ry Hill.
Right there.
Do you see, can you point out, do you see your, there's a lot going on here.
Yeah.
I'm going to try and zoom in a little more.
Right here. That's my lot.
Okay, so there you are.
So I'm way, way down.
So you're, you're potentially visible, but this mapping, and if you read the comprehensive plan, it indicates that, you know, if there were no vegetation, intervening vegetation, this is what would be visible just from a topographic perspective. But there is intervening vegetation and, you know, it is some distance from the trail. I can, before the next meeting, measure how far it would be, just for informational purposes.
It is far. I mean, I can tell you from having hiked that piece on both sides of East Monbassia. First of all, when you cross East Monbassia, you're nowhere. And even, it's at a low point, but it's elevated on either side and there's very little that you see from that point on the trail. When you get further along, closer to Lakes Road, it's much more of an issue. There's a lot more that's visible at points, but.
Right. Right. We could take a look, but, so what we'd like you to do is come back to the next meeting. And in the meantime, the board members will have the opportunity to check out your site, take a look at the surrounds. If the board feels that it's going to be visible, then we're going to want additional submissions and additional information. But if not, then I think we could treat this simply. So, does that seem reasonable? I know I didn't ask you to get into a full-blown review of this, but that seems a reasonable approach. I don't know if anybody has any other thoughts.
Web farm roads, a public road, we have access to?
Yes.
Okay.
So-
And you're talking about the 20th again?
Mm-hmm. When our regular meeting is.
Yeah.
All right?
And this one is a type 2 by definition. Bonnie mentioned earlier, there's another subdivision 10, which is construction expansion or placement of minor accessory of pertinent residential structures, including garages, carports, patios, deck, swimming pool, tennis courts, satellite dishes, on and on and on, storage sheds, et cetera. So it is a type 2 by definition.
I would, the only other thing I would add is again, your property is owned in your and your wife's ownership?
Yes.
Okay. So the same thing with the application applies. Your wife, as an owner, needs to sign the application as well.
Okay.
Type 2 action, we talked about. You did say you weren't going to do any tree clearing-
No.
-because that may trigger other review. So again, we'll hold off on some additional submissions until everybody gets to see the site. All right?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Sure.
Thank you.
Next applicant is Bald Hill. Good evening.
I'm hearing these voices coming from the back of the TV.
What's that? Voices from the back of the TV. Okay.
I think it's so much more, he's going to show it there, it's in black and white.
You may want to just open this up and take a look at it. It's a larger version of, I think, what everybody else has received. So, good evening.
Good evening. George Lithko, Kowalski-Gubitz, turn for the applicant.
John Till, architect.
What do you have to present to us this evening?
I'm sorry, John, I missed your last name.
John Till, T-I-L-L.
Thank you.
I think primarily, we have the architectural renderings and elevations that were submitted November 23rd, last month.
Okay.
I have two minor comments on the resolution. And then, I think we could celebrate the 8th anniversary, since we got preliminary approval, by considering final approval.
I actually have some questions on the restrictive covenants. So everybody receive that. So if anybody has comments and questions, we'll go through that too, and then we can go through the resolution. Again. Good evening. Sure thing.
So, again, so in continuation of what we, of the submission from our last meeting, we provided five renderings of a color palette. The color palette that, from our last meeting, we revised to incorporate more earth tone colors throughout the building. We've also looked at the garage doors, the front doors, the architectural elements, and brought in the more specific details to those as well. We now have the five different color palettes that we feel will make for a blending of colors throughout the project. We feel that these colors do work well with each other, even if they're next to each other or apart from each other. We're satisfied that they will work well together throughout the project. And in terms of other items, we've also supplied some rear elevations and rear perspectives of the buildings, showing the architectural elements on other sides of the building as well.
So, in terms of treatments along the base of the building, are those different stone patterns that you're showing, and brick patterns?
Yeah. So each color palette has a stone pattern that is connected to that particular color palette. So we, which matches the trim and the elevation color and the roof color.
I had a question actually about the patios. I mean, this isn't directly related to the architecture. The way that they're drawn, it doesn't appear that they have steps going down, or entrances, or openings. Was that intended, or will these have stairs and the ability to get onto the common space behind the buildings?
The rear decks or patios are directly connected to the approved site plan, or the site plan, as far as the size and shape. As far as the connection to the ground, if it's a raised deck, it wouldn't have a staircase going down to the grade, unless the site plan allowed it on one side or the other. Other patios that, or patios or decks that may be at grade would have that access because it would just be a matter of stepping off onto the grade.
Okay. So you have an A, a B, and a C rendering that shows the patios, the rear. And so the A version has the patios, which appear to be at grade. So you're saying those may have an opening and you could get access to the ground area.
Correct.
And then B is showing decks that are kind of mid-size, and it doesn't appear that there are steps coming off of those. So those would or wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to, Ben?
If the space was permitted, then we would. It would be based on the site plan location for the particular deck. If it's not, if we do not have the space to put a staircase in, then it would not have access. And it's not required either, so.
Right. So when you say the space, is it because of the fact that there's a retaining wall, or because there's just not a lot of common area back there? I'm trying to understand the space.
Certainly. It could be a combination of things. One might be the proximity to the neighboring unit, where there's a privacy issue. The other might be that we only have so many feet between the units, and to add a deck and a staircase, may not be feasible to work out that spacing. And then C, it might be simply just a site issue with other things that are happening on the site that won't allow for the space for staircases.
So-
I'm sorry, are you talking about drawing A, B, or C?
Yeah, well, A, I think, what's, they would be at ground level, so if there's just a spacing, they could walk out. So B and C, because the decks are elevated, my question has been, would there be stairs going down? So if there are staircases, we don't know where they'd come off of, if it'd be the side, if it'd be the back. We don't know where those staircases would come off.
Generally, there wouldn't be a staircase unless the site plan permitted it based on the size.
Okay.
But it does look like, in your C option, where the decks are really full height, where the, it slopes down in the back, that there is an exterior entrance out the back at grade, at least in this rendering.
Correct. Correct. So for instance, if it's, if the grade drops off in the back and it's an exposed back, a rear elevation, potentially a door can lead out to the exterior from the cellar.
Right. So in your C option, whether it's from the deck or from the basement level, we'll call it, in your A option and your B option, there is an option to get out the back as well, potentially.
Potentially.
In the, unless there's stairs in your B option, there's really no allowance for that.
And I believe that the two primary situations are the A and the C. The B option is, potentially could happen on the site, but the way the site plan is designed, the A and the B, A and C are the two primary options on the site.
I mean, B looks like it's on a fairly flat piece of property, and there's not a lot of really flat property on that site.
Yeah, B would be a more of a mid, like, B would be another option if that occurred. That's what it would look like. So we tried to not necessarily show, not necessarily show the exact options of what's happening, but the-
The overall.
The conditions that could happen.
Would people, over time, because I'm just trying to anticipate what, with the decks, number one, and these might be HOA questions, you know, with-
I'm waiting for a break.
So, just some thoughts that I'm thinking about, because I'm thinking about other developments I've seen. One, again, it's HOA question, and it's a building, I'm sure, question to some extent, building code question, but could, underneath those decks, could they end up being areas where people are storing things? Number one. Number two, if you allow, and this is an HOA question, if you allow one unit to have steps down, you basically have to allow everybody to have steps down if they really want. Just a question. And, long-term, can someone enclose those decks, or they would be, remain open decks? Because this kind of gets to the aesthetics.
The first two, I would say yes. It's an HOA question as to what happens with stairs from the decks. My understanding is that becomes the common element once you're in the backyard. So the HOA may assume some liability. If the stairs are required to go onto the common element, they may not want that liability. It's basically going to be up to the HOA. I would suggest these are relatively minor aspects of the site. What they will be is common aspects. Because the whole purpose of these guidelines is to ensure that there is a common plan of development, which I think overall, they do. The details like this will either be yes or no. They'll be common or they'll be prohibited, but they'll be one of the two. It won't be something where somebody can put a staircase on one, somebody can put a slide on the other. Those sort of incongruities will, by the nature of the HOA documents, not be permitted.
I would ask Mike or Mark, the extent to which things like having storage areas or enclosures, et cetera, are or aren't part of the site plan process and review process.
Well, certainly, enclosing would be inconsistent with the site plan, and I think would require an amended site plan approval. In terms of whether they can use the area outside of the units to store, whether it's a garden hose, put a flower pot, those are generally things that'll be governed by the rules and regulations. It'll be incorporated into the HOA. It is an aesthetic issue, I guess, arguably it's part of this, and if it's something you wish to see the applicant take a position on and incorporate into the HOA guidelines, let's hear what their take is.
If you, just a comment on the stairs, I think it's important that if the board takes no position relative to the stairs and let it fall under the jurisdiction of the HOA and the code enforcement officer, I think the record should be clear so that Ben understands that this board has no objection to the stairs, as long as they meet code and, of course, the HOA permits them.
Right. I mean, part of this is because this is going to be attached to a document that Ben is going to use when making determinations as to consistency. So part of it is, if you don't show stairs, or if you don't show certain things, you know, will Ben be questioning what is and isn't allowed?
And I suspect that there will be quite a number of persons who occupy these units that would like to have stairs down to the common area. So if the board doesn't object to those stairs from the decks, and of course, it works with the site plan, and it works from a code standpoint and the HOA, I think, if that's your position, the record should be clear that you're leaving that decision to those two parties.
And maybe there should be some mention in this architectural package of that possibility in the B and the C units.
What we could do is add it to the guidelines.
Design guidelines.
If the HOA provides a detail for a staircase, it can be installed.
Right, because I think the importance is consistency, so that-
Yep, right.
-it's not going to be one set of stairs in one direction and another, you know, and different materials, or, you know, or the same thing, if for some reason, there's an enclosure, I think, in the best of all worlds, you want the enclosures to look similar, so you don't have this hodgepodge, you know, of looks later on. So, just knowing what could happen, and if it's part of the guidelines, then everyone will know. If you're going to have storage potentially under these, you know, let's know about it.
Have uniform storage. Everybody will have a hose.
I mean, at this hose, but-
We can't contemplate all of the possibilities.
Yeah. No, but for instance, if it is a storage area, then would it make sense to put lattice or something under there? It's more just understanding, again, the aesthetics, long-term, and the consistency of the aesthetics.
Correct. Basically, what I would say is, the HOA generally functions with those things in mind. They generally are responsible for ensuring the outside areas are managed and used in a neat and consistent manner, in any regard. Whether or not you require them to do it, they have an interest in doing it because they live there. If it's something they feel should be regulated, they would regulate it. You know, it's basically going to work out that way anyway, I suspect. But certainly, if there are things which I think the points that Mark and Mike make are good with respect to stairs, we'll add that to the guidelines and make sure that they are uniform and consistent in each section of the project. And that could be, that will literally be, it'll be a detail, it'll be uniform and consistent throughout that section. Somebody else wants to put a different type of stair in a different section, they have, you know, they would have that option.
I mean, as far as storage is concerned, if you are talking about a sprinkler, you know, or, in fact, I would think, is this going to be sprinkled, or no?
No.
Okay.
No, it's not required to be sprinkled. And just as a side point, when it comes to storage, each unit will have a garage, will have the ability to store what they need inside the building.
Right.
And typically, as you mentioned, that's usually governed by the HOA.
Right.
And outdoor storage is looked at in that way, is that they provide, built into the building, a space in the garage that can be used for storage.
So that's, I was thinking of that, that the need for storage under a deck or whatever should be minimal. These are large units, and there should be sufficient space within the units themselves to be able to store most things.
Correct. Correct.
I have two comments.
So the idea of this is that, again, these rear elevations is to demonstrate that the architectural elements that we're presenting on the front of the building will also be repeated on the rear of the building. And these aren't, these aren't the exact specific prototypes that'll happen, fall over the entire complex, but it gives you an idea or flavor of the architectural elements that will be consistent throughout, and the colors as well.
Right.
So, as a concept.
Wondering if you considered, for the decks at grade, replacing those with paver stones or stone patio, and then also having a patio under the decks, when you have a deck above that. May be better for maintenance and long-term maintenance. That's one. And two is, this was in my packet, is this still on the table? This color scheme?
I believe so, yes.
Please, no.
It's not shown on the-
Oh, I'm sorry.
At least-
I don't know, I don't, is blue an earth tone, or?
It's a sky tone.
Sky tone.
Yeah, so this, these are in our packages, so we're not sure if you were including the blue here.
Yes, the blue is included.
I live in a blue house, and it's quite a statement color. I would advise you use this sparingly.
Yeah. Again, I think that, you know, we're not proposing, you know, red buildings and yellow buildings, and, you know, but we are, we are looking for a palette that makes sense overall.
See how his shirt sort of stands out?
Exactly. I'm the only one in blue.
What do board members think about the palette that's been provided and shown?
I'm also not a fan of the tan garage doors. It's, I just spent a week in Florida, and it seems very 55 and over retirement community.
And again, no, there's some-
Yeah, not crazy, not that.
There's some units that are 55 and over.
Yeah, there are.
There's some units that are 55 and over.
Yeah.
Yes, so the tan garage doors.
Maybe restrict the tan garage doors to that and, you know, throw a palm tree or two. And everything's great.
Again, one of the things that we're very satisfied with is that the palette of all the colors works within the building that it's in. So if we have a tanned door or a brown door, it works with the trim, it works with the roof color, so, and then that each color palette works with the neighboring building palette. So that when we look at the symphony of colors here, that it makes sense. And that we're not proposing something that really stands out completely different from the other buildings, but does have some of the other elements.
I like the palette scheme that you have, except I would say that the blue one stands out no matter what, whatever building it is. And I realize it's subjective, but I'm not a fan of the blue. And I realize it's subjective, but I'm not a fan of the blue.
No greens?
I think there's a, there's a few off greens and grays.
Kind of off greens?
There's a greenish gray.
Second one down in the, in the middle looks a little, that's a, that's a type of green, I think.
Was it supposed to be green? Some of these look more like tones of gray, but it could be my eyes. Yeah, sea grass was one of them.
Yeah.
But I see slate.
Yeah, color scheme D is the sea grass, the certainty sea grass.
Is that the one that's green?
That's the green.
Okay.
Harvest slate in there. We have the midnight surf, which is color palette B.
What is midnight surf?
Color palette B, item B.
But what is actually, is that the blue or?
That's the blue.
Okay. Because sometimes the names of the sidings, it's not like obvious. Instead of saying blue.
With the Royal Crest brownstone, that's item C. And again, we've connected them to the trim colors, to the garage door colors, which we have specified on here. So the color palette works with each other. We're, we're looking to, again, have, have a coherent look to the project, but also brings a variety into it as well.
You're also showing decorative doors to the rear where there's a walkout. Is the intent to have decorative doors?
Yeah, we're picking that door for the project.
And did we list that here?
We have it on the rendering.
Okay.
I believe, which is, it is at the oval thermotru door system. So it's.
So you have it shown on the rendering, but is it listed on the?
I don't have it listed in here, but it is selected. It will be the oval thermotru door.
Okay. Perhaps we could, we could add it if that's what you're already selected, that's what you want to use?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Which door are we talking about? Are we talking about the door in the back of the house?
If the group agrees that it's.
The building and also the rear door if it's a single door.
I mean, these pictures labeled, I mean, it would be nice so I can compare what A, B and C are. Thank you.
Right, so the color combinations are, I don't know if they were actually listed on the labels to the file.
Were these emailed to each of the board members or just printed?
I think these were came off of the Google that us, someone gave.
Website, yeah.
Right, and I don't know if the files themselves had.
Each file on Google Drive is labeled, you know, color may be. So I apologize for not.
Yeah, it was in the label, but it, but it's a good point. It's useful to have just the A or the B right on the PDF.
Just so you can connect.
Yeah, just to connect them. It'll make it easier for Ben, too.
Correct.
Especially when we don't have these, we have odd names for colors. I'm not, I'm not up to speed on what they are.
That's reasonable. Any additional comments, thoughts? No? Okay. Is there anything you'd like to add as far as, is there anything we haven't seen at this point of what you provided?
I think that's what we've presented.
Okay.
Along with the other suggestions from the previous meetings, just two dimensional drawings of the other buildings.
Okay.
And other arrangements.
So is it the boards, planning boards purview to select the color schemes and the options here?
You had reserved the authority in your preliminary resolution to make sure that the architecturals that were submitted and reviewed by you had a cohesive appearance, not necessarily that you liked a particular color. You wanted to make sure that it worked as a whole. You do going forward have architectural review authority, but at the time of this code you did not, except insofar as secret was concerned. And here, for a project of this size, to see some kind of cohesive, consistent look with a little bit of variety at the same time. So that it wouldn't look like, what was the phrase, a disaster.
That was implied, but it wasn't stated in the press.
I, it's a strong word in there.
George, or real quick, potential for privacy walls? Outside to give privacy to people on their decks, does that potential exist? And if so, we should probably have some kind of general design for it.
We would propose to add it to a guideline, it would be consistent among. That's a good point.
Yeah, so either it's going to be wood or, you know, will it be wood with lap? Just something, something as a guideline. Because, you know, the solution may be if they're close together, you may want to put a privacy wall up behind between the decks. I don't, you know.
Yes, we will, we'll add it to the architectural guideline list of things. It would be done in the same manner as the stairs.
Okay.
So with regards to having a stone patio and who's taking care of the lawn cutting and the maintenance around the townhouses?
The HOA.
So maybe that would be another reason why you'd want to do that. So they wouldn't be weed whacking up to somebody's sliding door every other day. Or, you know, you get overgrowth that, you know, I think that's a good way to manage that look.
Sure.
Is it, it's assured me you're agreeing that you'll provide that? Or you just like the idea in a vacuum?
Well, we do like the idea of being able to have a hardscape outside of the lower level door. I think that's a valid point.
Thank you.
And it would be, in that particular instance, it would be under a bush. I'm sorry, under a deck.
Exactly.
So.
So we could also add that, what I'm trying to do is collect the suggestions that seem useful. We'll put them under the technical guidelines. The HOA can implement them. Since that's the appropriate thing to do and all of the suggestions I'm hearing are certainly things they should probably consider.
Did, on the site plans themselves, because they do show little deck areas out the back, was there actually anything that said the material would be stone or rock or anything? Or it's just the dimensions?
Yeah, I don't recall seeing any material identifications.
Okay.
I think this is the perfect opportunity to do that.
Okay.
And that's another good point. Depending on the landscape and the geometry and the height of everything, you know, is it possible to have a deck four foot above grade? I mean, it's not something that somebody's going to be able to stand under.
Talking about the alternative.
The center one, the B.
Alternative B. I mentioned, I meant to mention, I talked to Norali last weekend. She doesn't think there's going to be any units that will be in the B scenario.
Okay.
We looked at it from a, what possible conditions could occur? And after review from the engineer, the upper, the A option and the C option were primary.
Okay, you covered that. Thanks.
Real quick before I forget, George, floor plans? Just a schematic of what could be the design of a floor plan? Has anything been worked out?
We were talking about that before the meeting.
Yeah, we don't, we, basically, when it comes to the units, we certainly have a footprint that we have to work with. We're designing within that footprint. We're designing our spaces on the second floor, the first floor, the cellar area, the garage area. You know, these are all spaces that will fit within our footprint. And we, we, we won't know exactly what the floor plans will be until we're out on the market and we know exactly what the buyers are wanting and we have to adjust accordingly. So we don't necessarily have specific designs for the interior spaces at this point.
What I recall you asking for was whether we could provide some typical examples of similar sized units.
Right, the size of units and generally given, you know, whether they're three story, you know, type buildings and units or two story generally, and they're large units. So what would be a typical floor plan? Not that, because we understood that at this point, there's an approval and, you know, Ben will make determinations with regard to review of number of bedrooms, et cetera. But just to see generally a layout and how it relates to walkout basements and, you know, the spaces and the windows that you're showing. You know, for the bedrooms, for kitchens, just. It would seem to me if you're showing a certain pattern, even from the exterior of windows, et cetera, there are assumptions as to what's going on in the space.
Well, there's assumptions that something will be going on. My understanding from talking to John is those are not actual, you know, there's not a bedroom behind a window that looks like it should be a bedroom. It's simply reflecting the fact that these buildings will have bedrooms somewhere. And they'll have living rooms with more space, you know, wider windows or whatever. So those are illustrations of what things will probably wind up looking like. They are not the render of exactly what the building will be constructed like. It will not necessarily have those particular windows at that particular location and that particular size.
Excuse me, would you just speak into the mic? I'm sorry.
But this gets a little concerning because we're approving architecturals on this and I understand there's some flexibility. But, you know, this is where we talked about, there should be a minimum glazing, you know, on, on the facade, you know, where they, so.
We're getting, you will be approving architecturals under the new code for those kind of specific details apparently. What this, what these illustrations show is what we believe those buildings are going to look like. What they don't necessarily show is exactly what they're going to look like. And what they can't show at this point is something where you can look and say, that's the kind of window that will be in a bedroom and therefore there's a bedroom on the second floor. It's, it may, may wind up looking exactly like that. It may, it will certainly wind up looking very similar to that. But where the windows go exactly is, you know, this is not fixing those locations.
Mike, Mike, so actually just quick, is this the only design guideline we've gotten? This kind of layout here of the ABC choices?
There is also a list.
Where's the other narrative?
There's a list of guidelines that we proposed.
Okay. And that gets into the glazing, et cetera.
Well, the, the glazing, I'm not sure that's the correct way to approach a building facade based on how, we do know that we're not proposing walls of glass. And we, we also know based on these renderings, we're not proposing very small windows. We do have a building code that we have to follow that dictates exactly how much of a glazing has to be in each room. So as we move through the project, whether we have a bedroom or a dining room or a kitchen, those, those glazing options will depend on what's behind the wall. And that is also governed by the building code, which will also be reviewed by the building inspector at the time of construction drawings. And it could vary from one side of the building to the other. So it's very difficult at this point to pinpoint exactly the percentage of glazing until we've, we've gone through the market study. We understand what buyers are looking for. We're getting to the point where we're building the building. Then we design our floor plans that go to the building department under construction drawing review. But what we can say is that the concept of the building that we're presenting to you here is what's going to be consistent throughout the project. So if these buildings, if you like these buildings the way they're presented here, this is what the buildings will look like as we go through the project. If it has one window, three windows or possibly a dormer on one side versus the other, that's the, that's the flexibility that we're asking for throughout the project as we start building the project.
I, I think the description then, okay, because I do start to get concerned because what I see are, again, a certain amount of window that's on each facade. And I personally don't know the building code by heart. So I don't know if you could meet building code and let's say the upstairs, instead of having two double windows, they're two singles. And then the, you know, muntens, they may decide to not have any. And then, you know, the first level above the garage, suddenly it's singles also. You know, so the whole aesthetic could change. So while I understand the need for flexibility, there's, that would be a very different product. You know, so, you know, again, what we're seeing is articulated buildings. We're seeing, you know, gable ends. We're seeing kind of a rhythm in the massing so that it doesn't appear as one flat mass. And the more we talk about flexibility and we don't know how they're going to build it and what they're going to do, et cetera, to, I get concerned that that in fact won't get built. You know, and that's kind of our expectation at this point. So, you know, to say we'll meet minimum, we'll meet minimum building code at least, that doesn't tell me anything visually or what it will look like. That, that's kind of my reaction.
A question for Mike. Is there a way we can drag them back here before they get their construction plan reviews done and signed off? I think that would solve a big question here that we're having.
Would you want to segment off the subdivision and site plan approval from the architectural approval?
You have a way to get us back here, which is if Ben looks and says, this is not consistent, it's coming back to you, or we're consisting it with whatever Ben says we need to fix. Those are our two options to get a building permit. And my experience with Ben is he's pretty conscientious about it. In some cases, he's very conscientious about it.
We can add a provision in condition number four that says the building inspector show, make the initial determination as to whether the renderings are consistent with what's been approved. And if not, the applicant's going to return to the planning board.
Are these where you were talking about the architectural guidelines in addition to? Is this the narrative?
Think that's it.
Because I thought, this, this piece in here.
Yes.
I thought we were going to update those to address a few more items. Include, I thought actually we were going to include something about windows.
That's not what I thought.
I don't know. Maybe my recollection's wrong.
I know there was a discussion at one of the meetings about percentages. What I think we're straying away from here is the idea of consistency with a general theme and appearance to specification of things that have to be done. It may be, for example, that over the course of this project, the market evolves from a window that looks like that to a window that looks like a different window. But if the market wants something to be done a certain way, I mean, certainly the houses that I've seen in the course of my life have changed in significant respects. If the market is changing something, your concern here is consistency. Does it look like a coherent project?
Right. I have, I struggle a little, George, that we don't already know what this should be or what it's going to be. That, and, and it's only 138 units. So, you know, I think there's phasing of the infrastructure that has to be done and that's, that's a big hurdle and that's a big cost. But I can't, I guess I just can't imagine these are going to be built in a way that you're only going to have one or two buildings and another two or three buildings or four buildings. You know, 138 units to me isn't a lot.
There's the potential for four or five sections to be built as sections of construction.
Right.
As those things get built, it could take a couple of years. It could be a different market. You know, certainly in the last 10 years, for example, we have seen going from big houses with lots of space to smaller houses, more economical use of those resources. We've seen that change take place.
Right, but that's not happening here because we have a building footprint.
That's true.
So.
But the point is, people want different things over that time. They, at one point, they wanted big, they were willing to pay the mortgage for it and later they were not.
George, do you envision if those market changes change what the builder needs to build to sell units, that you're going to come back to the planning board for another approval?
If we can't come back with something consistent with the plans that we have shown you and that you are going to accept, we would have to come back to you and that's what we provided for in the resolution. We can't come back and go through and say, the market's this way now. This is what people are looking for. They want, you know, they want blue tinted windows or something.
I think Jason brings up a good point that if it becomes so flexible or we really don't know, at what point do you say, you know, we'll come back in when you're ready to go?
Certainly we'll come back when the building inspector says, I'm not going to issue it because it's not consistent with any of the plans that the planning board approved.
Right, if, if we approve these right now. I mean, you know, I, because again, I'm, I get very concerned, you know. I think that we should be getting a product that's close to what's going to be built. You know, I've seen plenty municipalities and communities where they will show you the design, Hidden Creek, you know, what they built is what they submitted. design, Hidden Creek, you know, what they built is what they submitted and approved. And here we keep talking about flexibility and I appreciate that you put a lot of effort into putting these palettes together and, and even talking about the type of siding and what it'll look like, et cetera. But then there always seems to be a little bit of a backing off and it, whether it's about the windows or, you know, again, some of the aesthetics and, you know, I don't, I, why don't we just go with this is what will be done? They will be, um, at least doubled windows, et cetera, and then if they're not, you can come back. I mean, there has to be sort of a minimum that, that meets our expectations.
Your expectation is there'd be a consistent design. That's what your condition said. We're not talking about whether you like it, you know, we had the discussion with color. It's not whether you like it, it's whether it's a consistent approach to the designing construction of that section. And it's for purposes of avoiding a disaster or something unpleasant. And that's what we're attempting to accomplish here. What we're trying to.
I, I wasn't, I mean, a lot of us haven't been part of the discussions as to what, when it was approved, what the intent was for the architectural rendering, so I have to defer to, to Mike as far as how much did the planning board, you know, want to see what was the expectation as to the extent to which they were going to review the architectural?
Well, you can read it in the preliminary approval resolution, it says we have to provide.
The preliminary plan resolution or the, or the final one?
The language proposed in the final resolution reads as follows. No building permit shall be issued. Authorizing construction of structures inconsistent with the architectural building elevations, renderings, color and trim packages, and architectural guidelines submitted to and approved by the planning board as part of its approval, nor shall any certificate of occupancy be issued for any structures constructed except in conformance for the architectural renderings and other documents approved by the planning board. The planning board recognizes that structures are allowed to incorporate variations in the architectural treatment of the structure that are consistent with the architectural guidelines and color trim options approved by the board. The developer may propose additional guidelines that are consistent with the purpose of maintaining general consistency, in which case the planning board may approve, uh, the proposal without the need of site plan amendment, meaning what they want to avoid is having to come back with a site plan.
Right.
But if they change something, they're acknowledging they have to come back for amended architectural approval. The only element I was thinking of adding was that in the event they do, it's the building inspector who first makes the determination as to whether these are distinct from what has already been approved. So I don't know that it's a free for all that they're allowed to do. If they vary from these, which they are reserving the authority to do, it still has to be approved by you.
Could you go through the, you mentioned specific things, the colors, the?
Uh, it must be consistent with the building elevations, renderings, color and trim packages, and architectural guidelines.
Okay, so the building. So the building, building elevations are what we're seeing? And the building elevations include the windows, the?
There are some renderings, there are elevations, there's the specification of trim packages, and there's the guidelines, the written document that talks about what can be done.
So if, um, Ben were to see a rendering or elevations that now show instead of doubles, singles, windows, et cetera, would it be your expectation that he would say this isn't consistent?
He would make the initial call. Say, look at the, the first upper left diagram.
Mm-hmm.
You have on the, on the middle floor there, a two window on the left and a three window on the right. If those were swapped, I think Ben would say, well, that's consistent.
Right.
If they put in a, a triangular window or a round window, he may say, no, you got to come back to the planning board.
If they submitted a plan that had no relief in the front face of the building, I'm sure he would say no. That's not, that would be an immediate no. So those type of things, I'm sure Ben will.
I would, I would say no if John tried that.
I'm sure John would never even suggest that.
I mean, if I saw something that had instead of the doubled up windows on the upper level, so having that, you know, the two doubles, it was single, 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 there's still four windows. And if they're all the same size, um, you know, that would seem reasonable. Um, but if I suddenly see instead of two double windows, a single in each space, and now I see a lot of vinyl from my, you know, again, I don't know how Ben's going, because Ben is making this interpretation. Um, to me that wouldn't be consistent, but it comes down to Ben. So we're relying, relying a lot on the building inspector to make these determinations. He should just have the materials that we think will guide him in the way that the planning board anticipates. You know, the, the product that was anticipated, so.
And the only other thing I'm thinking about with that regard is, you know, what if we come to a point where there's a deal breaker, you say it is consistent, and we say it's not consistent, and say, well, you're not going to get any more building permits. Could that happen?
The building inspector wins that determination unless we go get a judge that you have a discussion with, which is.
And keep in mind, right, at, at some point we do have to present something to you for approval. So we could go in different directions, but if these are the, if the buildings are acceptable the way they're presented, this is what we want to move forward with. This is what we want to move forward with, with our guidelines. We want to have the windows the way we show them and, and the doorways the way we show them and the color palette the way we show them, and this is how we'll, we'll move forward. And as, as we mentioned, if we alter too far from that, Ben will send us back here.
But, you know, how difficult would it be if you get to a point and you're ready for building construction and you have your elevations and your floor plans, rather than submitting it to Ben just to provide it to us and we'll say, yeah, that looks consistent or it's not, why does it have to be Ben?
Doesn't have to be, except.
So, so we're not going to ask, we're not saying, you know, I'm, I understand, we're not asking for site plan, we're not telling you, you have to get an approval, but rather than going to Ben and him saying it's consist, consistent, why shouldn't it come to the planning board and we'll say, looks consistent?
I can think of.
Because we're the ones who are actually looking at the elevations and, and understand what the intent is.
Okay. In 2010, somebody looked at the, if someone had looked at those and said those were approved, no one would be around now. So then we would have new people to deal with and find out if they thought it was consistent.
But you, but you didn't have the renderings then?
If Charlie Infinity looked at, no, we didn't, well, we didn't have renderings, true. But the point is, if we had renderings at that point, we would still be back before you guys eight years later.
With different, could be a different, like you're, you keep saying the market can change, so in 10 years you're saying this could actually change. So you'd have to come back anyway.
Yes, and if, that's something where we would have to come back. But what you're saying is, show us what we think and then show us what you're doing in construction two, three years from now and let the board, which is maybe you guys, maybe not, make a decision as to whether it's consistent. It's not something that we need to do and it's not something we should have to do. The building inspector is supposed to make that determination. You approve a site plan, for example.
But, but George, why, you're saying it's not something we should need to do or have to do, but it, why should it be Ben?
Because that's what you do with everything else. You approve a site plan. That site plan, by the time it is actually being implemented, it changes before it's signed, because we have to change things according to your conditions of approval, according to other agency reviews and so on. Some of those changes may require your review, but most don't. If, if the building inspector and the engineer determine these are minor changes, you're not going to see it because you don't need to. That's the way the process works. It's designed, it's in theory designed to work.
The, well, the process actually has changed because the, the new comp plan and the new zoning actually gives the architectural review approval authority to the planning board. Acknowledging that you were approved before, obviously the, the, this, so, so the, so the idea is that it's not going to be the building inspector who, who looks at architecture, it's going to be the planning board, so.
You're going to look at construction plans?
We, that, we have architectural review authority now.
Typically you review and.
We're going to look at the elevations and we're going.
It would have to be billed as shown, and any change to it, we'd have to come back. But that's prospective.
Be correct. But, but my point is, you're saying, you know, why does the planning board need to or, you know, normally it's the building inspector, but actually it's the planning board now. So, you know, my point is that is the authority we're going to have going forward. And there has to be, from my perspective, the question is, what's the comfort level? Again, that, that, who, who should make the determination that it's consistent? And we've been operating under the premise that it should be the building inspector. And my question is, why does it have to be the building inspector? We're not asking for a site plan approval, we're not asking for, um, you know, you to submit anything other than what you would be submitting to Ben, and instead we say that it looks good and it looks consistent.
If we submit to Ben tomorrow, he reviews it in a week and we're done. If we submit to you, what's the current submission deadline? And then we have to wait for a technical review and then we have to go through, I mean, that's two months right there.
I don't think it has to be, and I think we could create a process where it's not.
Yeah, but it does.
I, you know, I, sorry, George, I'm speaking and, you know, I'd like to get the input of the planning board because it's not me, it's everybody here that has to weigh in on this.
I'm absolutely with you when it comes down to comfort level. I think part of what we need to get a better understanding and, and certainly Mike's guidance on this is, based on, okay, renderings and what's in the resolution and the guidelines that are submitted, how much wiggle room is there? And, and that's, I think, the part that we have to become comfortable. Where, where does that become, mark, where's it go from market conditions to all of a sudden we've got a whole different thing? And, and it has to come back through us. Even if Ben is making that determination, where is the line in the current environment and under our current code and under our current comprehensive plan? So that, that's really the issue that we're facing here, George. It, it's a whole new ballgame from that perspective and, and we're redefining that.
Right. For applications going forward, to get some reviews.
True.
We have been here for eight years, working for a variety of things to get through to final approval. We like final approval to be as final as possible. You have a control mechanism in place. Uh, and I certainly, from, in my experience, if Ben is aware that there are issues that you are concerned about, he addresses those issues. And I can think of no better example than, um, I think it was the use of the storage space in G2 on the Aaron Business Park property. Your code says if there's no exterior changes, the building inspector can approve it, in essence, or he did say that. And Ben did decline to do that. He said it needed to go to the planning board. So we went to the planning board, it took four months to get it approved. Now, your code, that provision is intended to give the building inspector authority in his judgment to take action on a project when there really isn't a site plan change.
George, we keep talking about the planning board changing, but Ben could change. He, he could get a huge increase tomorrow and decide he wants to work somewhere else. So there's no certainty that it's going to be Ben either. So either way.
The other thing I, and this is, it's funny to me because it seems like, you know, the word consistency is a moving target here and we haven't defined what consistency is. And maybe, you know, Ben doesn't want to make that decision on what is consistent and, you know.
Won't get a building permit.
You know, but he might not want to be put in that place because he's one person and not a board, so, you know, I just don't know how you qualify consistency except, it seems subjective and it should be. That's my comment.
Yeah. As a practical matter, it has, it's a reasonable person's determination it's consistent. I mean, if we drill, drilled down through, or if we followed this project to a process to its logical conclusion, we should give you construction plans and say, this is what we're going to build. Because, and then if we have to change, we'll have to come back.
I'll just give you, for instance, what if, you know, you come back and the billing material for the siding doesn't exactly match one of the palettes? And says, wow, it's not exactly gray, it's kind of gray. Should I make that decision as it's consistent with the color palette? Maybe it's because of, you know, what's available on the market at that time, you know, and maybe we shouldn't put that into the building inspector's responsibility, so.
Well, he.
It's just one example.
If there's a specification in the table and it's not what we are actually providing, then we would have to come back. I mean, it doesn't seem unreasonable because the building inspector takes responsibility for a lot of things all the time. And the question is, does he, you know, why should be?
Well, if, you know, just to move things along because, you know, I understand the discussion here and the point about, you know, what, why is the building inspector the gatekeeper? I'm comfortable going forward with having this scheme and, you know, having the building department, uh, building inspector, you know, determine whether it's consistent or not or if it should be, goes back to the planning board for review.
Yeah, it seems to me there are two threads going here if I'm listening correctly. One is the minor variations of elements that were within all of these renderings. And that, I think, it should be Ben's call, if they're reversing windows, changing the direction, whatever it is. The other concept George is talking about is what happens in the future if nobody will buy these, no, it's not in style any longer, and they need to propose something else. But that something else has to be, again, a cohesive design that will satisfy you. So if we altered the, the language to say, because I think it's, it's, it addresses both of those threads, first we say everything has to be built consistent with the renderings that were submitted, the renderings, the package. We then say the planning board recognizes that structures are allowed to incorporate variations in the architectural treatment of the structure that are consistent with the guidelines, color trim options, et cetera. The developer may also propose additional guidelines and color trim options in the future. In such case, the applicant shall return to the planning board for amended architectural approval without the need of a site plan amendment. So on the first thread, Ben's making the call of whether this is just a, a change within the pattern of using the same palette, the same materials, the same look and feel, but if they're going to come forward because the market has changed and this building or these buildings or units won't sell, then they're coming back to the planning board. But not at the level of amended site plan approval, but at, as architectural approval as to the new plan.
Good work, Al.
Just Mark Quick, I think I had said, or asked your architect to take a look at the renderings, I don't know if they had a chance.
I didn't know that, we were going to get together, but I don't know that he's looked at these at all yet, no.
Okay. Yeah, because I had sent an email just to take a quick look.
I might have missed that one.
Okay. Because we were just, we wanted someone else also input from the architectural perspective, so. Anybody else thoughts? No? Um, I don't know that this is resolved, but we other, we have a few other pieces here to address the restrictive covenants. So why don't we kind of switch gears just to make sure we go through that as well? Because I think there's some comments.
Maybe before we get off of the architectural, John, if you were to identify the different alternatives on the actual renderings themselves, perhaps if you reissue that, send me an email and I'll have Andy take a look at it. If he has any questions, he can get back to us.
We're also going to add the, uh, front door spec, specifications.
Yeah, so maybe you can put an updated package together and get it out electronically and that way I can get him to look at it and, and get some response back to the chairwoman.
Everybody have the declaration of restrictive covenants? Um, the lot five, is it going to be the entirety of lot five that's encumbered or a portion of lot five?
All of lot five would be encumbered by the restrictive covenant, which is why I, I don't know if this is related, but there was an email from Mike with a question about what the water supply lines was related.
I think maybe that was from, did you have that question about water supply?
I did.
Okay, okay.
And there is a small portion where the wellhead movements go, but there's also a, uh, potential that the construction of the water tanks may require a construction easement on the lot five, so to provide for cranes or something to install the tanks options. So we'd just like to keep that open and there's a very small, uncertain possibility that if wells need to be redeveloped, we might have to go on the lot five to do that. But that would be, that would be something we would try to avoid doing, obviously.
And it'd be subject to review anyway for an amended plan?
Subject, yeah. And basically the idea of this restrictive covenant is no development.
Right.
If you're putting a well and it's really not an intrusion like putting a building up, so I don't see that that would be, I don't think it's likely these things will happen, but I didn't want to have a covenant in place which created issues for the future.
Okay.
But beyond those reserved items, it does encumber the entire lot five.
Okay. So it's the entirety, because I think there was something in the.
Because otherwise we'd have to carve out the easement area and the construction easement area, so we're just providing.
I, I think there might have been something in the final conditional approval resolution that talked about either a portion or the entirety, so I just want to understand if it was portion or entirety of lot five, understanding that there's going to be improvements that have to be made within it. Just a question, um, line 47, for good and valuable consideration, the receipt of which is acknowledged, but does that just mean it's zero dollars?
That's the.
And that might be standard language, but.
Standard language for conveyance, I've never, actually. Standard language for conveyance. I've never, actually, no dollar. Although I think it says ten dollars now.
I've seen a dollar. So this one, I'd never seen, nothing stated. So that's what his career is.
Well, just instead of the dollar, they say that they've received.
They've already received consideration.
Already. I've seen that a lot of times.
Okay. On one general purpose, the purpose of this declaration is to maintain the restricted property substantially in its natural condition. Could we instead say the purpose of this declaration is to maintain the restricted portion in its natural condition in order to protect, et cetera, et cetera? And at the end, say, except for improvement set forth in whatever's in here? Rather than using the word substantially?
Just as an aside, what is, never mind.
So you could make the change?
Mike, well, I can make the change. Mike can make it.
Oh, okay.
He's going to review it.
Okay. So just, I don't know that we need substantially.
Take out the word substantially.
Right. But perhaps at the end, say, except for...
Except as allowed here.
Right. Something to that effect. Trees, vegetation, under four, except removal of trimming of trees or vegetation hazardous to persons or property of timber downed or damaged due to natural disaster or as may otherwise be authorized by the town of Monroe. Does the town of Monroe have to authorize the clearing, burning, cutting, or destroying of trees that are hazardous? Would they still do that in advance?
We have, I think that provision came from a restriction that was used somewhere else where the community did want the option of authorizing it before it was done. I think it was the village of Woodbury.
Okay.
So, I mean, basically, do they have to authorize it?
That was a question.
I think it's probably what we should leave in there.
Why don't we say, except as authorized by the town of Monroe? Instead of, or as may be otherwise?
Because it was more like an interpretation of, you know, could we suddenly see five or six trees because someone said it was hazardous and it really wasn't? So...
I think what we'd be willing to do is say, well, if we can, I mean, if a tree is in danger of falling down like this, with the storm or something.
Right, right. That's different.
You don't want to wait.
Right.
Otherwise, we will, unless it is an emergency, we will obtain a permission of the building inspector. He's the most likely person to...
Right. Well, I think you've, generically, what's been stated here is authorized by the town of Monroe. So whomever that, if it's Ben, it's Ben. Because in other places, authorized by the town of Monroe, maybe the planning board, if it were like an actual site improvement.
Yes.
So I think generically, you were saying authorized by the town of Monroe.
Yeah, I mean, I'm reading it to say that you can't do, you know, you can't do this cutting unless it's a hazard, unless it's damaged, or unless it's authorized by the town. And that's how I'm reading. And I think they mean the town like anyone in the town, probably because it's, I don't know, we declare that we don't like oak trees someday or somebody says such a thing. You know, they're trying to do some townwide effort for something. I don't even know what that would be. But that's why I would have left it as a war, I think.
All right. We can leave that. But what if we put, because George, you're talking about, you want an authorization, emergency authorization, say in the third line, except emergency removal or trimming of trees or vegetation hazardous to persons or property or of timber downed or damaged due to natural disaster, or as may be otherwise authorized by the town of Monroe.
I like adding the word emergency to it because then it elevates it that you're just not cutting it down. You know what I mean?
Good with that. The situation where there might be, for example, otherwise authorized is the one I talked about before where it may, the town may want to construct a second water tank. They need to clear a space for the crane to come up to the property. They have to cut down some trees. That would be an example of otherwise authorized. We would do it for them. However, it's a situation where the town says, okay, you want to cut down three trees, do something, and we're okay with us.
Yeah.
That makes sense, actually.
Yeah, I just, I only, my only...
Random acts of...
Right, right. And I'm only, I don't know if it's shown on the site plan where that area may be in the cutting of the trees, only because we have a revised tree preservation section now, which triggers certain reviews. So just be mindful of that.
We will try not to cut down trees.
That'd be the best.
I'd like to clarify two things.
Sure.
Just back to, I certainly, with the issue of like the wellheads, or even frankly, the building for the water treatment facility is not major in the scheme of things. The water tanks are. The way this language is written in the restrictive covenant, it sounds like the plan is not to have the water tanks in lot five. Does that allow for these tanks to be placed in lot five, the way this language is? Now?
The proposed sites are on well, lot four.
That was the way I saw it, yes.
But there's potential for construction easement.
I get that. That makes sense. My other question is, and this is about the nature of restrictive covenants, so...
Wait, it's a quick Jeff. So you're talking about the well sites.
My biggest concern with the water treatment is the tanks themselves. That's, first of all, with where they're located, they're going to be at the highest elevation of the property, but also, they're significant in size. If, remember, you know, the figures, roughly 20 acres lot five is. So we want to obviously preserve, that's a nice chunk of land out of the whole project altogether. I mean, so if all of a sudden now 20 acres is 15 acres because we need to clear out space for these tanks for the facility, that's, it's just a different look. And it's a different feel. So the restrictive covenant is with W. They're going to be the developers, but ultimately, right, we keep coming back to that the property is going to be managed by the HOA. Are they similarly restricted by this covenant? Everyone across the board?
Everyone with a title going forward, yeah.
But just to clarify, lot five is going to be owned by Duke Job. Lot four is the residential development, which will ultimately be the HOA and governed by the HOA.
So Duke Job or its successors will continue to be the owners of lot five?
Correct.
Okay.
Is there no way this could be a rental development? Could this be a rental development? No, I'm just curious. Could this be a rental development where you wouldn't have an HOA? That Duke Job would decide to keep this and would be renting out the units? I mean, they're massive units, but I'm just curious. That's not the intent?
That's never been the intent.
Okay. So I was just kind of moving along. So interject, where the five, six, structures, utilities, at the last sentence, unless expressly, is authorized by the above referenced land use approvals? I wasn't sure if they were referenced.
And the whereas clause?
Yeah, I'm looking here. Has applied to the planning board for approval of proposed plans.
Third, second whereas.
Town of Monroe has granted conditional final approval to aforesaid plans. So that's what you're referring to.
And then further down, whereas lot five is presently undeveloped, except for the proposed plan of water supply shown in a map plan report. So it's recited specifically where the work that can be done on lot five is authorized. It's the one, two, three, four, the fifth whereas clause.
Okay. So land use approvals is referring to all those whereases?
Yes.
Okay. Pesticides and herbicides, there'll be no application of pesticides or herbicides to control vegetation on the restricted property. Is there any, is there any requirement, and this is to Mark, do they have to maintain areas around water tanks and do they use pesticides and herbicides?
I don't know that they're restricted next to the tanks, but clearly in the protective areas for the wells. But I would see no reason why they would be up at the tanks applying pesticides and herbicides.
And certain applications require somebody with a permit or a certification, so.
Yeah, I didn't know whether they have to keep clearing so that you don't start to get growth or brush or anything up near the tank. I just don't know.
They maintain the areas surrounding the tank, but it's generally done mechanically.
Mechanically?
Mechanically.
Okay.
It's a general term.
Weed whackers, mowers.
Weed whackers is the device of choice.
Yeah.
Eight other restrictions, nine existing conditions, 10 reserve rights, 11 recording, 12 right to inspect. Is the right to inspect at any time?
Maybe it's something you notice, but whenever you can get someone to come.
Okay. So there's no restriction? They can...
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Should there be?
I was just, again, the way that it's worded, that raised, I just raised a question. 13 enforcement against third parties, 14 property transfers, 15's amendment, grant of right of enforcement, and then 17's cost of enforcement, notice, severability. Any other questions?
I don't know if we're worried about it or not. But 13, the third parties, would you, would you care about what the HOA did? Would you ever hold the declarant?
I think what this is intended to say, and it's something you've got to consider, that if somebody, stranger to the transaction, comes in and dumps garbage there, it's not their doing and they're not going to be forced to take care of that problem. In other words, they're not the insurer of the pristine nature of this property. If there are people that are, you know, use that example, dumping there, they're not going to be the ones that have to take it away. That's what it says. Whether you want that or not is another matter.
So who does accept that responsibility in the case of a restricted covenant? Or does no one, really it's merely an agreement, that we're going to treat this properly?
They will not do those things.
Well, not because of the restrictive covenant. If the billing inspector finds a violation of the property management code, we have to do it.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, there's other stuff in place. Yeah, maybe this isn't the place to add anything.
I mean, what, you know, if kids come in, they chop down trees to build a fire or something, and then we're dealing with the consequence. We want to try and avoid those sort of unearned things on our, on the order.
I guess the only third party I'd think would even qualify to get, you know, for the discussion would be the HOA. Is there a relationship with the HOA in the...
There should be no relationship between lot five and the HOA property because it's all filled.
Because there's nothing built?
There's nothing built. There's no, nothing proposed to happen on that other than those limited private.
Okay. All right. Now, I think it's a non-issue. I think I brought up a nothing, but that's all right.
No, that's all right. It's not, it is something. 10 reserve rights. This gets back to, I think, Jeff's question. So it says, including but not limited to the right to establish, maintain, improve, and redevelop the aforesaid wells. But the wells are on lot four?
The wellheads are on lot four.
So they're not on lot five?
They're not on lot five. It's conceivable that, they're not far from lot five. If the well fails for some reason, and the hydrologist comes and says, we identified a second site 10 feet over that way, and it's on lot five.
Does lot five include any of the valley area? Where are your wells now? Are they in the, more in the valley or are they on the actual hill?
They're about halfway up. So I recall, or before you make the left turn on lot five, lot five is like a, like a hocky stick. It's got a long skinny piece that goes up, goes over, heads south towards the village. And so I recall, the wells are sort of where the turn is.
But they're between where lot four is, where the development will be, and what's facing the highway?
Correct.
Because there's a strip, there's a strip of lot five that basically runs parallel to the highway before, the majority of lot five is the, is running up the summit of Bald Hill.
Right.
You know, as far as the property goes.
No, I was just curious, would, could you actually develop wells on lot five? Or is that just not an area where wells would be developed? I don't know.
I think they're just reserving the right that if their hydrologist wants to move the location, it just happens to encroach toward five, that they will be able to develop those wells.
Okay.
What lot is the water tower of?
Lot four.
Okay. Any other questions on the restrictive covenants? No? Okay. We have a draft of the resolution that was amended, dated March 6, 2018, 5:14 PM. Any comments on the resolution? Have, has everyone got a chance to take a look at the revisions? This was a question, general question, in general, general municipal law. The preliminary plan was referred. There was a GML review. Does GML have to happen also on final? Because GML, actually, I was looking at this recently for another reason, and it says preliminary or, I think it says preliminary or final. And I didn't know if that meant that every time you granted an approval, you had to or not.
Small subdivisions generally only have final.
Exactly. But when you have a...
I think that's what's meant. No, I don't think David's office wants.
Right. And it wasn't the intent that by the law, that it's at preliminary and final.
But if there's substantial changes between preliminary and final.
Then they go back, right.
To address agency comments or board comments, then the board in their discretion could send it again.
Okay. Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't sure if there was case law or something that said, actually, because it's two actions and two approvals, it does have to go back. I just wasn't sure.
Okay.
Okay. Well, how is it working? So the restrictions, the units that are being restricted, the 36 or so, how is that going to work? Which ones are going to be selected?
There is one section, which is the section at the top of the hill. Those units will be sold subject to a restriction.
And so all the restricted units are going to be in a building or a couple of buildings?
Yes, and that's necessary because of the Fair Housing Administration requirements. You can't discriminate on family status or age, except if, I believe it's 90% of the units are restricted. So they're basically providing for age restrictions, age restricted communities.
Are they called out in the plans? Or do they need to? Just a general question.
One of the conditions is that that mechanism be approved by the town board before the plans are signed.
Right. But do we need to actually say which of the units are age restricted on the maps?
No. I think it's the entire section of 36.
In a particular phase or... Yeah, no, I'm just, I'm just wondering if the plan should actually say, these are the age restricted units in this location?
Because they have to be in one project, one specific development. And that project, that's going to be a condo, which is going to be for those units only.
Okay, okay.
Maintain the compliance with the FHA.
Do we know which phase that cluster is going to be located in or not at this time?
I think it's the third phase. Just...
Just looking at the site plan, that's what looks like it would make the most sense.
Right.
Because it's sort of off to the side there.
Right. Okay.
That's where I'd want to be if I was in.
You'd want to be in phase three?
Yeah.
Which unit?
I want to be towards the top. I want as nice a view as I can get. There we go. I'm thinking here. I got my eye on that.
Take your deposit out.
Yeah, I'm getting to the official active adult definition.
Yeah. I'm getting closer to qualifying by the minute.
I'm getting closer to the inactive adult.
Emergency access, the Knox box, the arrangements, et cetera. Was that run by the fire department at all already?
I'm not sure if it was.
Okay. With the areas, any areas where lot five is going to be disturbed? Are the areas going to be staked out before the, is that part of the plans or the SWIP, the areas before they're disturbed? Do they have to be staked out?
Yeah, we've pretty much adopted at this point a requirement that a land surveyor stake those out and we put in construction fence. So we should make sure that that's reflected on the plans and in the resolution.
Okay. So that's something, if it's not in there, we'll add to the resolution and maybe a note on the plans? What Mark just indicated?
The clearing limits and having that staked by a land surveyor.
You're talking about clearing limits for lot five?
Actually, I think for the development.
Generically for the development, so that...
Which would include lot five?
Which we normally put as a note on the stormwater plans.
The concern is basically ensuring that no one is going on the lot five and clearing the...
I think we're talking site plan, at all.
Right. Just, so my question to Mark was, what has been the process? Do we stake... Do we stake out in advance before clear cutting and everything starts happening, what the limits of disturbance are? And I know there's a SWIP which says what it is. I was looking at some of the plans, and they say approximate, you know, area of disturbance. And so that raised a question to me, is it really approximate? Or do we stake it out in advance, just to make sure no one's encroaching in an area they're not supposed to?
I have a feeling the reason it says approximate is adjustments may be made from point to point based on the actual amount of disturbance that's required for a specific building and a specific location.
Unless.
It's not approximate in the sense that.
Right, I don't, I mean, if it's a foot or two, that's not, but, but is, but if it's staked, then there's no, and that, again, what the process is, if it's staked, then there's no question as to what the limits are.
I'll, I'll work with Natalia and Sean.
Because if you have a protocol, we'll follow the protocol.
Yeah, yeah, that's what we generally, we've had too many errors.
Right.
So this makes it easier for everyone.
I know of what you speak.
All right, so that'll be added. Anybody else? No?
No.
Comments? Okay. Those are my comments.
As an example, that would be the sort of thing that we, you have a condition in there which says the plan has to be acceptable to Mark. Mark made a note of that, we're going to put a note on the plan, so I don't think we need to necessarily put the notes of all these specific things in the resolution as you control this, Mark.
It's easy enough, I'll add one, clearing limits must be marked in the field by a licensed surveyor before site disturbance commences, and note to this effect shall be added to the plans. I think George is trying to protect me, I told him I don't want to have to add any numbered conditions because then it takes that table at the foot of the resolution that talks about when things need to be done, and it ought to be renumbered. So I'll, I'll either put it last, or I'll find a place I can add it to existing condition.
Or like a thirteen, a thirteen point one.
Thanks for trying to help, Trace.
Put a footnote.
Put a footnote. I'll find a way.
All right.
What I was generally going to say is, we've talked about specific things that need to be changed. We've talked about the architectural renderings, meaning the requirement of the draft condition. And I talked about the fact that tomorrow is our eighth anniversary. So many of the things that you have discussed, I think all of the things you've discussed, like the, the note being added to the plan for the limits of disturbance, are things which are pretty black and white. So if the engineer says it's there, you see it's there, then, you know, it's a fairly straightforward process for the determination as to whether or not the plan should be signed. So I guess what I'm wondering is, I would like to keep you all from having to come back and listen to us again.
Well, this is a workshop, so we don't normally take action at workshops. So I was just going to tell you to come, be placed on the agenda.
You have, on some occasions, taken action at a workshop. When we originally appeared at the first workshop, there was contemplation that you would be able to take action, we were discussing that with someone. Whether or not you normally do, I mean, this is a project that's been here for twenty years. There are no reasons, you can take an action at a workshop, whether you typically do it or not, it's up to you. I think we've, and I appreciate the fact that we've been trying to work with you, we've been engaged with you for the last couple of months, and you've been very helpful in trying to work through the process and come to a conclusion. I also think most, I think all of the issues that have been discussed tonight are at the point where you can craft a resolution that comes to a conclusion.
I would ask the board what their thoughts are, and whether you want to see whatever revisions are made to the resolution before you sign off on it, and whether, I'd like to kind of poll the board, do you feel that the architectural renderings and having the building inspector review it, do you feel that that's resolved? Or that, does that require additional discussion? Maybe we could, maybe we want to start with Lisa, and then we'll work on down.
I'm okay with the architectural renderings and having the building instructor, inspector.
Okay.
Determine that.
Okay.
Generally speaking, I am as well. I wonder, and outside the purview of this project, is it appropriate, we're kind of the legislative arm, you know, George is the executive arm, he's, he's the one that actually is out there doing it. But should we be having a conversation with Ben? You know, or, or multiple conversations with Ben to make sure that both sides are on the same part of the process? And again, that's outside the purview of Bald Hill, but is, is that,
Well, we're having.
Is that appropriate, and is that something that we can technically do?
We're having a, like a workshop.
We are tomorrow, and I had some suggestions, so maybe, maybe deal with Bald Hill today, and we may have some suggestions on how to handle the architectural aspect and coordinate with Ben for future projects. I've, I've got some suggestions that probably would be a good workshop discussion tomorrow for the technical workshop.
Okay.
I just think that'll be effective in addressing what our concerns are going forward about comfort levels and where the line is, and, again, just so that we're all on the same page.
I think then the question to me is, do we want to have that conversation with Ben before the final meeting, where we take care of this at a regular meeting? Or do we want to see the resolution written up, and then we'll approve it at the next meeting? When I say approve, I mean approve, George, so.
George, what are you requesting tonight?
He wants an approval, like a subject to whatever conditions.
He's been outing this for eight years.
So.
Or do we want to?
Let's go around.
Or, right, the question is, are we doing that tonight? And then we'll see what Mike Craftsen gets back to us? Or do we want Mike to make the revisions, have the conversation with Ben, and then approve it at the twentieth, which is our regular meeting?
Oh, I got it, I'm good, so let's go around.
Yep.
Can I offer you one third option?
Sure.
Which I typically do with some of my boards, is to approve the resolution, subject to review in final form, to make sure the words say what you thought you heard tonight. So at the next meet, I mean, if you approve it, and Mike's resolution reports to what your intention was with respect to the various points we've discussed tonight, we're done. If it needs to be changed or something like that, it gets changed. But the approval is.
I think if we were to review it in final form, we'd end up just addressing it, well, we'd address it at the next meeting, so.
Yeah.
So it's approved, but we're still going to end up with the next meeting doing a finalization of the resolution, so.
That way you're sure what the words say, what you thought you heard tonight.
I like the idea of being sure of what the words say, and then accepting the resolution.
So you prefer to see the resolution and then approve it?
I'm going to echo that, I would rather see a clean copy and know exactly what I'm voting for, and then recognizing that everyone is satisfied with that resolution and what we're voting on. As for the architecturals, I mean, I'd like to see the model house. I get, I'd like to see the results of the market study, I'd like to know that if you're going to market a two-bedroom house, I'm going to see a two-bedroom house. But I get that, you know, three years down the line or so. And as for the colors, I still don't like the blue, but it's, if it sells, it sells.
I think the building inspector's job is one that has discretion and requires good judgment, and is not merely just a guy with a checklist that checks that things are done. I think passing it off on him is a reasonable thing to do, we give him the guidance. I think it has in the words there that they're supposed to be consistent. He'll have pictures of these drawings as a starting place for an idea of what it is supposed to be, you know, you've got to have the first unit to have any consistency afterwards, but in order to establish what that first unit would look like, it would look something like what we're seeing here. And again, with his experienced judgment discretion, as much as we do with our job, he has that with his, so I don't, I feel we're leaving that part in good hands, and he can always bring it back to this board if he feels that it's gone outside the boundaries of consistency that we, you know, said are, are out there. I know it's a gray area, but again, it's, that's, things with gray areas are the jobs that people with good judgment are supposed to have, so.
And then in terms of the resolution, would you like to see the final resolution at the next meeting?
I would be okay with approving it, and then, you know, looking over the changes that Mike Donnelly makes afterwards, but I understand the, if people have increased levels of comfort with getting to read it beforehand and want to do that, I don't feel strongly about it either way.
Okay.
It's, it's everybody's level of comfort with what they like to do.
Okay. I agree with Jeff and Jason, I'd like to see the final language. I look at things differently, I don't think the building inspector's supposed to have that much discretion. So I think that that really should be the planning board's purview, because they're the ones who reviewed this. You know, building inspectors, they issue building permits, and it's based on specifics, and I, I don't agree with the level of discretion when it comes to architecture. And I would like to see the final version, before I vote.
Well, there's two, two outstanding issues that I haven't resolved, and I don't know how the applicant's going to resolve it. One is the color blue, and I would like, you know, if you want to move this forward and, you know, rule it in or rule it out, I think we should poll the board, because I know how I feel. And the other issue was having the hardscapes, and incorporating that with the architectural review. So if you want to leave that as an outstanding item, that may be considered when we have the resolution to go forward, but that's something that, you know, I would like to see. As far as the building inspector is concerned, and where he gets involved with his discretion, on the fence, Bonnie, you may be a little nervous, because I agree, I think, you know, he should be able to use his or her judgment, and, you know, he's in it, or her is in that position to exercise their judgment, and I think, you know, they're very competent people, and I respect that. But, you know, how much leeway is there for consistency? And with regard to the relief and the color schemes, you know, I, I think, you know, you make a very good point, so. And with regards to having the, I don't mind, you know, I, I don't know really what we're approving because I don't have a resolution in front of me, so I'm on the fence on that, I would like to see a clean copy.
Do you, do we want to talk about the color blue? Do you feel strongly about the color blue?
No.
Okay.
I, I like the color blue. I'm the outcast on this one. I thought having six similar ones and one outlier, so then you can tell people, I live next to the crazy blue house. I think it would be helpful, but again, I don't feel too strongly about that either way, either, so, anyway.
I, I'm actually with James on that, I, I like the blue, but, and again, it's a personal thing. I don't think it's wildly inconsistent with what's being presented, but I kind of understand the opinion as well, you know.
I, I don't mind the blue, I would actually like maybe a, like almost a darker blue, but I don't mind the blue. In fact, I, this color scheme is so close together, I actually would have liked a few darker colors, but that's me, but I, the blue doesn't matter to me. If it was a little darker, I think it, a little more muted, I don't know what it is, but I don't feel strongly.
Well, as far as, you know, overall landscapes and, and building facades, I'm just basing on my experience, and I personally like uniformity, some kind, I like the fact that there's some variation, but I, I really think that the earth tones and having some uniformity towards earth tones, tones is preferable for me. And I don't like the idea of having outlier of, of a blue, it just, for me, it sticks out like a sore thumb, and I don't want to live next to a guy with a blue house, so, you know, that's my opinion. So, you know, if you want to move this forward and take a, a vote on the, on the color options here, you know, that's fine with me. I certainly appreciate the process.
Why don't we just have a show of hands? Who doesn't want the blue? Who would prefer not to have the blue? Okay, so, blue's in. Do you want to talk about any of the other color palette?
No, the other ones are fine.
Okay, so the, so blue, everybody else is okay with the color palette? Okay, and it, do we, okay, so it sounds like you'd prefer to see final form resolution? Final form resolution?
Yes.
Final form, you didn't feel strongly?
I'm fine with it.
Lisa, didn't feel strongly, final?
Final form is probably.
Okay, so, next, next meeting.
Can we nail down the, the concern, or, you know, my thoughts on the stone landscaping?
Sure.
Is that appropriate?
So why don't you restate what your concern is?
So I think, when you have areas of decks, you know, I think having a stoned hardscape is better than a deck, because I think it requires less maintenance and less headaches. And I also think that there's some maintenance issues regarding maintaining landscaping and mowing, so I would think if you have a deck above grade, that you'd want to have some kind of stone patio underneath, if it's going to be used, especially around entrance ways and doorway ways. And if you're going to have a, a deck at grade, then I would suggest that, you know, you replace that with a patio at grade, a stone patio.
Okay, so.
Two of, two other items that went with that are also an acknowledgement on the guidelines on the possibility of stairs from the decks.
Yes.
And as well, the, the privacy walls.
Right.
So I think we were looking for an update on those guidelines.
Right.
To go with a package that identifies the color schemes by letter, so that the minutes make sense, since we've referred to all different combinations, but the actual paperwork that we have copies of don't have those, although the files may have. So I think that resumé of the package, together with an updated resolution, should be something that would be a full package for consideration at your meeting.
Okay. And, and, you know, what kind of got lost in this is that, and for whatever reason, your architect was going to look at it, so I would like if they see something that's really out there, you know, to have the benefit of their, their comments. If they could do it sooner than later, that'd be good, because George has been, you know, I know you're working towards this approval, and we're trying to get it done.
Working towards inactive.
John has all the information, so it's really a matter of just adding the bits and pieces we've talked about, so if you could get that out to us electronically, I'll have it looked at as swiftly as possible.
Okay, so we want to talk about, so it sounds like it's two matters. One is, instead of having decks, having paver patios or concrete patios, I guess?
Yeah, I'd rather have paver stones, but, you know, it's something that blends in with the, the color scheme that's being presented. And just to add another point, because this really does drive home my, my concern on maintenance, but if you have a deck above grade, you know, I don't think the homeowner would want somebody mowing and weed whacking under their deck, and if you have, and so if you don't have any, you know, material down that prevents grass and weeds from growing, that could become an unsightly issue.
Okay, and so the concept is also paver or concrete, or, or stones in general?
Well, I'm just thinking paver stones, but I'm, I'm open to what the applicant, if they agree.
Could be imprint concrete, I mean, there's a lot of different color-finished imprint concrete, so there's some options that John's looking at.
Just something that's aesthetic, something that's maintenance-free.
So it's concrete, not macadam? Because I've also seen, like, not stamped asphalt, we're talking concrete, okay.
John could suggest some information that's consistent with the architecturals.
So this would be in lieu of decks?
No, if the deck construction is going to be wood, which you know could be, you know, that's going to require regular annual maintenance for staining, and I think that would become a maintenance nightmare. So if you do build a deck, you know, I would imagine that you'd want to do the same vinyl siding or whatever they use today for, to minimize maintenance.
So two different situations, if we have a deck above grade, like, option A here, we would mimic that footprint with a concrete or a stone patio underneath it.
Exactly.
That's option C.
C, or B or C.
B or C, yeah.
And if the deck is on grade, then we wouldn't need a concrete pad underneath it, because it would be at grade.
Exactly, but I'm, I'm suggesting that, you know, consider, not have a deck, have just a patio.
A patio, paver patio, or stamped concrete patio.
Also, if this helps, just the grass underneath the deck is always in the shade, it doesn't always grow that well anyway, so you don't need to weed whack it as much, but it always looks kind of.
So is that okay with everybody, thoughts?
But, I don't know if that helps.
And applicant? You're okay with that?
Yeah, we'll, we'll come back with that particular item addressed on this, on the submission that I'll be sending to the engineer.
Yeah, whatever you send to me, make sure it goes to Noreen, so that she can forward it on to all the board members, so they have an opportunity at the same time to look at it.
And again, the, the elevations here are, show, you know, situations, but the site plan actually shows what we can do as far as.
The footprint?
The decks, yeah, the footprint, yeah.
With regards to option A, do you have a preference of building a deck or a patio?
As a, as a connection to the living space of the house, and responding to just general market needs, being able to have a deck is more of a, an outdoor space. It's connected to the house, it's closer to the house, in terms of maybe one step out of the. to the house. It's closer to the house in terms of maybe one step out of the rear door. You come down onto the deck as opposed to a patio that under standard construction, you'd have to step down three or four steps.
Okay.
So the deck is a better connection to the living space from an architectural standpoint. That's not to say that it can be flexible throughout the site.
I suspect if it was as close to on grade as what you're showing with A, you'd probably end up with a patio. Because I doubt you would have wood at ground level. So I think that's.
The rendering is not a construction drawing, technically speaking.
I think that's what we're trying to figure out. So I think we're trying to determine, is it going to be options either or? Or I think your proposal that it be just paver or, pavers or concrete, stamped concrete or something, right?
Picking up on Mark's point, I mean, if the deck is truly at grade, I don't think you want to put lumber construction at grade. So you might want to have an option to have.
If the conditions warrant where the grade is in that particular building that high, a patio would be preferred.
Right.
And if the grade is lower, a deck possibly. And then if the grade is completely dropped, a deck with a patio underneath.
Exactly. Yes.
So those three options, one, two, three.
That's what I'm thinking.
So that's what we'll, that's how we'll approach it.
You can call them D, E, and F.
Yeah.
Could we add to the resolution just that where it talks about the architecturals, et cetera, specifically say the building footprint shall not be changed without returning to the planning board?
I think we're saying even more than that, but I'll add that.
Right. If we could just add that. Okay.
John?
If the building footprint, if the footprint of the buildings change, that it requires that you come back to the planning board.
What happens if it changes within the footprint and it becomes a foot smaller in any dimension or two foot smaller? You would want it to come back at that point.
No, that, that's, that's just minor, minor field changes. But if suddenly I see.
It should be clear that if it expands beyond the limits of the footprint.
Or if it's significantly smaller, that would be a different product too. So one foot, two feet, that's not what I'm concerned about. It's significant changes to the footprint. So how we define that, I know. So I think, I don't know if you want to define significant, but.
The law has a reasonable person as the standard. They spend, we spent a year talking about what that meant. It's, it is what it is. If somebody looks at it and sees a difference, it's a change. If you see a change that seems like a large change, you're going to say it has to come back and be reviewed. The building inspector will make that decision. And frankly, you know, I think you guys are working through this architectural stuff with him and you'll be having conversations about that. It may not be something we would have to live with by law, but the practical consequence is going to be, he's going to know what you're thinking, what you're concerned about. And if he sees something that he knows will tick you off, he'll send it to you.
Well, there's nothing stopping the planning board from having a conversation with him. So that when it does arrive, he'll have a sense of what the planning board wants.
Conversations about a lot of things. When he knows the shape of the windows makes a difference to you, he'll look at the shape of the windows off the plan compared to himself.
So getting back, George, getting back to the building footprint, just saying, building footprint shall not be changed without coming back to the planning board. And I know you're saying reasonable. Is it okay to say that?
Use the word substantially, significantly changed?
I would significant.
Okay. Thank you.
I just have a question for the architect. I really like Anthony's suggestion about the patios or the, you know, the hard service. One of the things about the design that I happen to like is the stonework. Would it be possible for those patios to be complementary to the stonework in the various five options that we have?
I can look into that with the applicant. You know, there's many options.
I imagine there are. Just, it'd be nice to be able to, you know, continue on with, you know, and extend what you've already done, which is nice.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to see you next meeting.
And Mike is going to address the questions you had about the restrictive covenant.
Can you talk to the mic, please?
Mike is going to address the concerns that were identified about the restrictive covenant. And he and I will review it and you'll get a report.
Right. And we'll get a final draft so that we're ready to.
Vote.
Vote. Yes. Take action. Vote. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. If you want a cookie before you head out, there's extras.
Save it for the twenty.
Save it for the celebration.
You may have a cake.
Yeah, I might have that cake. Put a lot of candles.
Real quick, Ward, do you have any things you want to add or no, you're good? Okay. Thank you. Mark, Mike, anything we need to raise, bring up?
No, I guess one thing quickly because you and I exchanged some emails on it. On the 239 review, you asked whether things like.
Oh, yes, yes.
The accessory apartment approvals, I'll throw in wetland approvals and the ridgeline approvals are required to be referred to the county planning department for review and report if they're within the 500 feet trigger distance. We put in perspective the history of Orange County and its planning department. The statute allows planning departments to opt out of the requirements of referrals. And for many years, the Orange County Planning Department did opt out. In 2004, they changed that. And I pulled out the letter after Bonnie and I exchanged emails. And it's different than my memory of it because my memory was that, it's the August 16th, 2004 letter, that what the commissioner of planning wanted to do was review site plan subdivision, special permits and variances only, and did not want to be burdened with anything else. But in fact, the letter quotes the subdivisions of the statute, which says, "Other authorizations which a referring body may issue under the provisions of its zoning law or ordinance." That means that if a, if the accessory apartment section is in the zoning chapter, and I believe that one is, that's a referral that has to go to the Orange County Planning Department if it's within the trigger distance.
Okay.
The wetlands permits would not because they are not in the zoning chapter. And I didn't get a chance to check whether the ridgeline, although I suspect that is in the zoning chapter. So there's two things we're going to have to look at, Noreen, and that is, is the project within 500 feet of a trigger place? And is it site plan subdivision, special permit, accessory apartment, or ridgeline, but not wetlands?
Right.
So we'll have to, you know, perhaps in the application packet that we're still working on, identify, you know, any, we can list what's in the statute, any trigger items that are within 500 feet of the project. So that the applicant is doing that legwork for us. We don't have to go get an area map and figure it out ourselves.
I think scenic roads is another one. We have scenic road provisions. So when I had done, when I had done the PowerPoint presentation, I think I had laid out some of the new approvals. So that might be a good basis. We also now have historic, you know, review and we have architectural review. So I don't know if that's capturing things.
Any of those that are in the zoning chapter or other referrals would have to go to the planning department. Now, we may want to clarify because I, my memory is, is pretty distinct that although the letter quotes the statute, that when, there were a number of problems with, when this was reinvoked, the Orange Municipal Planning Federation, and I was involved in this, had a series of meetings with Dave. One of the issues is when you have an application that needs both site plan approval and a variance, technically both the planning board and the zoning board have to refer it. And we kept asking, do you really want two referrals for the same application? On that, we didn't get an answer. If an application received site plan approval in year one and the planning department reported that it was a matter of local concern and a minor amendment comes in in year two, does the planning board want another report? Or is it sufficient that since it was local determination the first time, it's local determination the next time? We couldn't get a real answer from Dave then. But on the issue of the other approvals, because a lot of municipalities have them, ARB, a number of other things, architectural review, his position at the time was that they really did not want to see those. They were, you know, the reason why they opted out in the first place is they don't really have the manpower to be able to do all of this and they didn't want to be burdened with it. That's touched on in the letter. He does say that you may use any transmittal format you prefer. And of course, that's changed. They now have a form. Please, he does say somewhere here. Oh, "Our primary interest is not to be inundated by a large number of applications, nor is it to produce more paperwork. So I ask that your staff and board pay close attention to the 500 distance, 500-foot distance requirements in the statute. Our primary interest is to offer advice and assistance wherever possible and to keep a better track of what's going on in the county." And my memory was that he amplified that. He wasn't really interested in the others. So we may want to call his office and ask, "Do you want to see all of these other approvals under 239M? Or would you rather not get inundated with them and let them decide?"
What year was the letter again? Is it 2004? 2004, not 2014. So that's an old letter. So he, the policy may have changed again. So I think it'd be great if we write him a letter and maybe outline what all our approvals are. Also, do you have the transmittal form for GML, whatever it is?
Yeah.
Okay. And if we could just, if you could share the 2004 letter, you know, scan it and then we could just circulate it to the planning board so they have a copy of it for your information. Okay. Thank you. Anything else from the board? Questions? No? Comments? Then, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All my word.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting.